Call the March 2 board of supervisors meeting to order. Do we have the, yes we do. We have Girl Scout Daisy Troop 3140 is going to bring us up and lead us in the pledge. Thank you. Mr. Hodgman, you lead us in prayer, please.
Yes. Generali Father, we just thank you for this time to come together. Lord, we just ask you to provide those traveling mercies to those who may still be coming to the meeting and those that might need to leave early, especially with the weather that's the way it's been. And we do ask you also watch over those first responders that constantly serve in the county when we are asleep and serve night and day faithfully their service to preserve life and limb. We also just thanks, thank you, Lord, for those that defend us abroad and far away, places that we will never know. Just pray you watch over them and their families and bring them home safely. Pray you guide our deliberations this evening as well, Lord, and remind us of our duties, not only to you, as Thomas Jefferson said in Article 1, Section 16 of the Virginia Constitution, Lord, but also the duties that we have to our fellow citizens here in the county to govern well. All these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, before we finish the prayer, may we say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I want to ask you also to send your prayers for Mr. Williams, who's ill this evening with the flu, and he's also had some other problems that he's dealing with right now. So if you would just a moment, just send good thoughts to him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before we move on to item four, I do want to recognize one individual tonight. Give everybody a chance to get seated. Before we move on to item number four, I do want to recognize one individual who's with us this evening, Mr. Ron White, who works for Congressman Randy Forbes, is here somewhere. Where is he? Please stand up if you want to speak to him after the meeting. I'm sure he will wait around, or you can get his ear and take him out in the hallway. So, thank you. Item number four, request to postpone agenda items, deletions, or change in the order presentation. Are there any? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move that we approve the agenda as presented by the county administrator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll have certificates of appreciation, special resolutions, a proclamation. I think Mr. Barry Hodg just got something you can go down and read, I think.
Yes, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. If I will, give me a moment and let me head down. All right, just a moment, I'll just take a minute. This is a resolution on the agenda this evening regarding the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club. And what I wanted to do is, I know we've got quite a few people here in attendance, so why don't we do this to start with? If I can have maybe the head coach, Mr. Barham, come down, and then the assistant coaches, and then any of the youth that have been involved in the shooting club throughout the years, if they can come down and stand there as well. We're going to have kind of a crowd down here, but I'll try to line you up maybe as best as possible here. And then I'll take a few moments to speak and give the resolution as well at the same time. So if we could have, if Frankie Barham could come down, and if there's the other coaches here, Mr. Adcock, Mr. Chapman, anyone else, and I'll probably miss somebody, we have so many volunteer coaches on the club. But if you gentlemen just want to face that way, maybe the crowd can see you better that way, I think, as I read this resolution. And we'll let the kids, if the kids are here as well, they want to line up down the aisle there, I'd appreciate them to stand as well and line up. That way, at least, the crowd can at least turn, maybe crane your neck a little bit there to the left, and see the number of students that we have presently in the shooting club here at Powhatan. Yeah, and if you're short, you can come in front of the coaches, that's fine.[322.14][322.14](laughter). And I want to say, before I read the resolution, and we're still kind of assembling, I volunteered for about the last little bit more than maybe 10 years for the club, and had my family on it. And it all started long ago when Mr. Barham came up after church, we were attending, and wanted to know if my two older girls might want to join the team. And if you know anything about Frankie Barham, he's always been trying to recruit the straighter shooters, which are female shooters in general. So he's always been out looking for those to recruit and get those to come to the shooting club. And I really appreciate that, because it started a long journey for my family that I had never anticipated. And also, if we can have Kathy, why don't you get over here, too, because Kathy Howland also is important, because it's 4-H, so if it's 4-H, or Kathy, if you want to snap a shot and then come over, that's fine. But, and I'll read the resolution in a moment here, but I want the importance of the size of the team and the size, the number of coaches we have and the number of youth that we have involved in this, in the county, and this is probably not even everybody this evening. I'm not sure, Frank, how many do we have this year on the team? Thirty-two on the team this year. So we've got a lot on the team this year. But let me read this resolution, and I think it speaks for itself. Proclamation: Recognizing the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club. Whereas the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club is part of Virginia Cooperative Extension's 4-H Youth Development Education Program, where young people in the 4-H community learn citizenship, leadership, and life skills by implementing the 4-H philosophy of "learn by doing." And whereas the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club was established in 1980 and just completed its 35th year of being a competitive shooting club in Virginia Shooting and Hunting Education Competitions. And whereas the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club, through the shooting disciplines of small bore rifle, skeet, trap, sporting clays, muzzle loading, and archery, teach youth the life skills of safety, hard work, patience, responsibility, teamwork, and marksmanship. And whereas the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club, through the hunter education, through hunter education, teaches youth the knowledge and skills of safe and ethical hunting. And whereas, under the 22nd, or under the 22nd year leadership of 4-H Club leader Frankie Barham, the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club has been supported by a dynamic and selfless group of coaches, who have invested thousands of volunteer hours into teaching youth the shooting and hunting sports. And whereas, under the 22 leadership of 4-H Club leader Frankie Barham, the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club has become renowned as one of the top 4-H shooting clubs in Virginia, earning the continued distinction of placing in the top team and individual slots year after year at the Virginia Hunter Education Challenge, the Virginia State 4-H Shoot, and the Virginia 4-H Shotgun Championship. And whereas, in 2014, the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club achieved some of its highest honors by having the senior and junior teams win first place overall at the Virginia Hunter Education Challenge, sweeping first place in four out of the five events, and going on to have the senior team win six first-place ribbons and the junior team win three first-place ribbons at the Virginia State 4-H Shoot. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby recognize the exceptionalism of the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club in the shooting and hunting sports, commends its head coach Frankie Barham and all of the volunteer coaches for their dedicated and selfless commitment over the years to the youth of Powhatan County, and acknowledges the significant value of the knowledge and skills the Powhatan 4-H Shooting Club teaches the youth of Powhatan County in a "learn by doing" environment, adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on March 2, 2015. With that, I'll open a motion, or, Mr. Chairman, you can open a motion for adoption.
I'll do that. Any other comments before we call for a motion? I have a couple. First of all, this organization's done a wonderful job. I attend the NRA dinner every year, and this organization's been there actually working very hard to sell raffle tickets and do whatever else they could to support that organization also. I have grandchildren that enjoy shooting sports. They're not quite old enough to be in this organization, but one day they will be, and I commend everyone. All kids don't like to play baseball and football, and this gives them an avenue to do some things, and this group does it very, very, very well, so.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Frankie, I want to just say something real quickly, and I'm going to let Frankie say just a few words, because this team has been phenomenal, and there could have been a lot more in the resolution. Actually, I started out with about five or six pages, but we couldn't do a five or six-page resolution acknowledging everything. But I want him just to say a few words about the fact of the caliber of kids that come to this club, the caliber of the coaches, and the caliber of the parents and the community that supports it. Frankie, you have the floor for a moment.
I'm not a real public speaker like Barry, but like I said, we're blessed to have really good kids, coaches on our team, and over the years, we've actually had one kid that tried for the Junior Olympic Team from our county, and two kids represented our state and actually won the Nationals through our program. And like I say, these kids have just been unbelievable, and like I said, he said also, "Look at the number of girls that we have. Girls are stomping the boys' butts."[711.13][711.13](laughter) It really makes me feel good. So keep up the good work. But thank you all so much for recognizing our club. It's quite an honor. I don't think these kids realize what it is, but it's quite an honor, and thank you all very much.
Thank you.[724.20][724.20](applause). Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodg.
You all are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you do not have to do that if you feel like you need to leave. You can do so, please.[752.63][752.63](laughter). We invite the members of the public to share their thoughts on matters and issues that are germane to the county business. This is not a forum for criticism of specific individuals or attacks on any personal group. It is also not the forum to campaign or promote a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter of which the board has responsibility. Please, if you come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Max Timberlake, 1479 Dorset Road. I'm the president of the Powhatan Farm Bureau Federation. One important part of the Board of Supervisors 2030 vision for the county is to maintain our rural character. Our local farm bureau has also developed a Powhatan ag vision along with that. According to the 2012 USDA statistics, there was $13 million of ag and timber products sold from Powhatan. Part of our local farm bureau vision is support agricultural education for our youth. I am here to speak about one of those youth programs, that of which I'm particularly proud I was a part of when I was here in this building in high school. That is the Powhatan FFA chapter. I am also a member of the recently chartered Powhatan FFA alumni. This past snowed-out week was the National FFA Week. The FFA organization is involved in response to expanded opportunities in agricultural industry. Today, FFA helps members prepare for careers in agribusiness, agro-marketing, science, communications, education, horticulture, production, natural resources, forestry, and many other diverse fields. I just want to recognize the importance of agricultural education programs in our junior and high school programs. STEM is an acronym that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Ag education takes the STEM objectives to an even higher level through hands-on, real-world experience along with leadership training. Our local chapters have demonstrated outstanding performance at many state and national career development events. The FFA motto is "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and live to serve." The National FFA theme for this year is "Go All Out." The Virginia FFA theme this year is so appropriately, "Make Your Mark." I can tell you the agriculture program in the schools are living up to that challenge. Whenever you see a blue jacket, you can say that they are the future leaders that will provide food, fiber, clothing, and shelter for the world, and some may even be in your seats one day. The Junior High FFA chapter would like to invite you to the board to an informal appreciation breakfast this Wednesday, March 4, at 7:15 a.m. at the Powhatan Junior High School, Corner Cafe, to learn more about this organization. I thank the Board of Supervisors, I thank the school board and the Board of Supervisors for the continued support of agriculture and the service to your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake.
Rick Butcher, I reside at 1803 Cook Road in District 5. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution 2015-16, which comes before you tonight. Let me speak a little bit about my credentials as far as speaking to this. I've been involved in EMS since 1977. I've been an ALS provider for over 20 years, and I have the distinct privilege of serving as your fire and EMS chief. I'd like to praise all the work that our volunteers do, the rescue squad volunteers as well as the fire volunteers. Our rescue squad volunteers put out a tremendous amount of time, serve a designated duty night or duty day, to be able to provide that service. Many of our volunteer rescue squad people have undergone many, many hours of training to get their certification, their ALS certification in particular, and their level of care that they provide is very good. I'm glad that we're not talking about a level of care issue tonight. Tonight, what we're really talking about is a staffing issue. It's no debate that we need ALS here in this county. When we first contracted with ESS to begin the paid crews, we required two ALS providers on each unit. And so if ALS was not an important issue, we would have never included that in the initial contract. I think the contract currently requires one ALS provider and a BLS provider, but initially it was two. And so if we staff those ambulances at the ALS level five days a week for 12 hours for each one, then ALS must be important. ALS providers that we have here in the county are very dedicated, travel countless miles to ALS calls. I served as a volunteer with Powhatan Volunteer Rescue Squad, and I live in Ballsville, and I know what it's like to be the first ALS provider on scene of a major trauma at Mosley. If you can just imagine what the response time is for that, it's pretty significant. I know we had response time issues in Founder's Bridge, and Mr. Williams worked with Chesterfield County to overcome that shortfall. Again, I praise our volunteers, and I know the sacrifice that they make, not only individually, but the sacrifice that they make away from their families. But when we began billing for service, things started to change a little bit. There's an expectation of when you are paying for something, that your level of service meets certain standards as well. And our volunteers meet those standards many times, but not absolute, particularly with ALS response. And so what I would propose to you tonight is that with Chief Singer in staff, have the volunteer ALS providers designate the times that they're able to staff, and the times that they're not able to staff, then we would hire somebody for those positions through our contractor, ESS, to be, so that we're able to ensure that we're providing ALS coverage to those critical calls 24/7/365. I think that we can manage this and include using our volunteers. Again, I can't say too often how much I appreciate their service, and I know most of them that have been around for a while firsthand. I know they ALS providers, and I'm proud to say that their level of care is superior, excellent. But they can be everywhere, all the time, and that's what we're trying to address is those deficiencies. So I ask you to give serious consideration to Resolution 2015-16. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask them a question?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher, thank you so much for your comments. Do you, based on your experience, do you have a certain number of ALS providers in mind, even a, you know, plus or minus one ballpark figure that you would recommend to the board?
I think if, I think if the board was here, and Mr. Williams in particular was here and heard my recommendation, he would shudder. It is greater than one, but I would be pleased if we had one on duty continuously 24/7. I think that's a starting point. If, you know, I know what it's like to run from my home in Ballsville as ALS provider down to Watkins Landing. I know what it's like to run from my home in Ballsville to Mosley Railroad Crossing. It's a long run for one provider. I would be certainly happy to work with the chief on making a recommendation county-wide on that, but I think at least one 24/7 is a starting place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. By the way, if, and I should have mentioned this, if you're here tonight to speak on an action item, this would be the time to speak, because the next comment period is after the action item, and action items are not held, we don't hold public hearings on those. So thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bob Marcellus, 283 Petersburg wrote, "Thank you for what you all do, and also the county employees. I wanted to make two comments. One is on the check register. I really thought that should have got a lot more publicity, because it's an awesome idea, and I wanted to congratulate you all on getting that online. Goochland was the first county, five or four years ago, to put their check register online where the citizens could actually see what the line items were, and it fosters a lot of transparency, it fosters discussion and trust, and I think it's awesome what you did. I'd like to add that if you could, instead of a PDF file, could you make it an Excel? And also, there are several other programs that the citizens could look at metrics, not just go into the line items. Something called open.gov will put the county's check register online, and you can actually break out all kinds of neat little spending things, so it's much more user-friendly, but it's a great step in the right direction. And on that topic, at Goochland, at the same time the board passed the resolution to put the check register online, and went from basically worst to first in terms of transparency, they also requested the school board do the same, and I couldn't find the school board on there either, so of course I'm going to go drop by the school board and ask them to put theirs online, but some communication from you all would be nice to say that you would support that type of idea. I think it's great. And real quick, and I want to say this before the budget presentation, I'm going to view today's budget presentation in the light of the following. I believe my numbers are correct, the Powhatan County budget has doubled in spending, in size, gross doubled since, over the last 10 years. That spending increase has far exceeded the rate of inflation, the rate of population growth, and by any measure, the rate of economic growth. So if it's doubled in the last 10 years, rough numbers right now, that's compounding at 6% or 7%. We are either funding that through increases in taxes, increases in debt, just simple cash flow, or we have to have a flying economy, real estate assessments going through the roof, to be able to sustain this. My concern is that we're not looking at the bigger picture, and I'm not arguing specific budget items, this or that, but what are we doing that's sustainable? Already, our real estate taxes are the same as a county 10 times our size, Chesterfield. We're in that ballpark. So is what we're doing sustainable? That's a big question. We're outstripping the rate of growth and the population growth, so let's have a better discussion on that. So I'm going to be looking at tonight's budget presentation in light of, can we continue to do this over the next 10 years? Thank you.
Complete name and address. Bob Wolf, 1858 Hope Meadow Way. I'm new to the, I'm a new resident down here. I did sign up for the local fire department, and one thing, I'm not a member yet. I am a member in New York of a fire department on Long Island, and when I heard them talking about the EMS, so one, two things came to mind. One, I don't know about Virginia, so please forgive me if I'm wrong, you should have ALS 24 hours a day. We have it in New York. It's not required on every ambulance call. They will take a regular fireman to drive the ambulance, they will take an EMT, and it'll call for an ALS interrupt if it's something requiring advanced medical aid. So a regular volunteer EMT should be able to take that ambulance out with the train driver and go to your emergency calls. If required, something where CPR is in progress, ALS should come along. I believe you should have that here. Your county does what my little district on Long Island does every year, about the same amount of calls from what I've seen. The other thing that I did find out while waiting for my background check, I was approved to be a member of the Powhatan Fire Department. My background check hasn't come through yet, so I'm not a member, so I cannot speak on behalf of the fire department here. I can tell you that I did find out that your budget for training this year is zero, and I find that appalling. I saw what your budget is, somebody told me it's about a half a million dollars a year. If that's true, that's also appalling for a department of this size and what you have to do. The little department that I'm from on Long Island has a budget of close to $4 million a year. It is completely voluntary. The only thing we pay for is our dispatch and our maintenance people, all right? And we own the buildings. I know you probably can't come up with $4 million a year for your emergency services, but I think having zero for training is absolutely absurd. Just with the size of this county, I can't see you doing anything less than a million dollars a year. I'm not trying to waste your money. The chief can speak better on these kind of things than I ever could, but real quick, I'm in the television news business. I've been to four plane crashes, major jetliners, both World Trade Centers, Newton, Connecticut, the hurricane down in Louisiana. You're not prepared for anything of any major consequence here. If there's a terrorist attack at the Walmart, you guys are screwed. You've got to put the money into your emergency services. Don't screw around with that, because someday it might be your life that depends upon it. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes, I was going to say, thank you, Mr. Wolf, for your comments, and thank you for volunteering.
Hi, my name is Billy Gwin. I live at 4370 Steer Creek Drive, volunteer on the Powhatan Rescue Squad, so I've come here to speak about Resolution 2015-16. I don't disagree with what ex-chief Butcher said, that we need ALS around the clock. We're getting to that point. What we're looking for is a comprehensive plan that we work out with the chief instead of being told, "This is how it is. I don't care if I do have a volunteer paramedic on, there's still going to be a paid person on." And that's really truly sending a heartburn of a signal to the few ALS providers you do have. Still waiting on us to possibly get together and work on this. I know there's been a lot of sharing of information, and I really ain't got much more to say. I spilled my beans last week about it. I just hope that she had more time to work through it all.
Thank you, Mr. Gwin, for your comments last meeting and for tonight.
Good evening.
Kenny Holley, 6019 Old Buckingham Road. I'm hearing the same resolution. I just want to reiterate a few things. The need for ALS is certainly always needed at one point or another. Your BLS folks can handle a lot of calls. Your BLS folks can determine if ALS is needed for the most part 99% of the time. You know, we have a lot of resources we use, whether it's MedFlight, ALS, or many, many things we use. The thing I'd like to get across tonight is that you've got volunteers that's been there last night, you've got volunteers there tonight, and you've got volunteers that'll be there tomorrow night. Please exhaust all avenues before you start using paid people. And make sure you use them wisely, cost-effectively. Just don't go make a decision because everybody thinks that's the best thing to do. Sometimes it's not. Use your choices wisely is what I ask you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holley. Anyone else wishing to come forward during this public comment period, please do so at this time?
My name is Marco Francio, 2316 Wing Mill Lane, Powhatan. I'm here to actually complain about the closing of Comcast local office. And I have a question for the board meeting. Why we allowed to Comcast business to close the local office? I know there's been renewed franchise with Comcast and has been signed, the closing, actually, I don't know if they signed the closing, but I saw they sent a letter to the Powhatan County that they were having the office open for three more years or unless they open a new office around, in the 10 miles radius of the Powhatan County boarding line. So it's not very convenient for the people that live here, and the question is why we let Comcast close the office? If there is a good reason for that? Because I don't see any good reason for the people that live here. So this is my complaint. I'm not happy of their decision to close the office. I know that Comcast tried to save money, but Powhatan County should work for help the people that live here, not to help the business make money on people that live here. So that's, I don't think is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other ones, else wishing to come forward, excuse me, during this time, please do so at this time? This time I'll close, close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or requests to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just one question. I think you may have already provided it. I had a question about the workforce development program, but I think you provided that perhaps in the resource publication I've got here on the number of Powhatan citizens and/or businesses. I think that, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I think that question is probably in there.
Well, it, that is not in there. The number of users is 573.
Okay.
Okay? And...
Do they at all break that down ever? Or is, in other words, how, were the 573...
That's 573 citizens that have benefited, not businesses, citizens.
Okay, is that the entire region or is that Powhatan?
That's Powhatan alone.
Okay, that's Powhatan alone, right. That answers my question.
If you remember, we were only going to fund per user, not per citizen.
Right.
Per population, which they wanted us to do.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the cost by funding it per user is $900. So if you look at it approximately, $2 per person, that we would be contributing towards that.
No, I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you. In what you have there is a report that kind of goes into some of the other supporting, continuing support of the Workforce Alliance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented by the county administrator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Does any of you have passes? We're going to now move on to the appointments, boards, commissions, and committees. First one we have is the Agricultural Forestry District. Ms. Waller, will you be taking these or do you want me to take them?
You will be taking those, sir.
Okay. I apologize. Let me get to page 46. So at this time, we have the Agricultural Forestry District, and I think the opening is in...
My district.
Your district?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Robert Harper to this particular board, the AfD. He's one of the best farmers and business people we have in the county in this regard, and he served faithfully and well so far. But a move to renomination.
I do have a second. I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Nay. Next we'll move on to is the Extension Leadership Council, and that opening is in mine. And I had someone who had accepted. Unfortunately, when I got home this evening, they had called and left me a message that they decided it's a little more involved than they want it to. So I will ask that we continue this until our April meeting, and I will have a, I will have somebody for our, at our April Board of Supervisors meeting to appoint to this position.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next will be the Piedmont Community Criminal Justice Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did speak, I did get a chance to speak with Richard Cox late this afternoon about this position. As we know, last time we appointed Mr. Beasley, who is now on the bench to this, who was formerly the Commonwealth Attorney, and now, of course, Mr. Cox, after the special election, is the Commonwealth Attorney. And he is ready, willing, and able to serve on that if the board would so appoint him. So I would put that in a form of a motion for him to serve on that. I know under the state law, he can serve on that. And of course, the past history was, is that Mr. Beasley had served on that for some period of time. So I would nominate Mr. Cox for that position.
Second nomination.
Questions?
Just one. It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that Judge Beasley is remaining on that board. Is that correct?
Yeah, he remains as a judge. He's, he kind of changed his hats, but he's on the board still. Yes, there's still, there's one open, if I'm right, still.
Correct. We appointed Mr. Beasley as a representative from the judicial side. Last meeting, and there will be...
Powhatan's well represented. We got one on the bench, one on the bar.
And also, the sheriff serves.
The sheriff serves.
You have three appointments.
And we need the sheriff over there because they have to have a sheriff.
We need to have the sheriff on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Next one we have is our Community Action Agency Advisory Board. This position has been open for quite a while. And I have to say that I have not been able to find anyone. Has anyone else made any progress on this?
Move to defer.
Get a second on the motion to defer.
That to the April meeting, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Move to defer this appointment till our April meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Next appointment we have is a Social Service Board, and we have Mr. Bobby Fulcher, who has turned his name in for this position. Mr. Fulcher is actually with us tonight, and he is very active in our community. And, you know, I think he would do a wonderful job serving on this, this organization, and I'm in full support of that.
I'll second that. Is that a nomination?
That is a nomination.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor of Mr. Fulcher on the Social Service Board?
Aye.
Aye? Close? Nay? None, please do. Excuse me. Motion passes 4-0. We're going to now move on to our public hearing. First public hearing, this is ordinance 2015-01, amending Section 80-1, a definition of Article 1, general provisions of Chapter 80, Water and Sewer, Wastewater County Plan. And Pat's going to take this. This is basically a continuation from our last water supervisors meeting.
Members of the board, at your last meeting, you did have a public hearing on this item, and the public hearing has been continued to this evening. So after staff presentation, we'll ask you to open up a continuation of that public hearing. At that meeting, the motion, a motion was made and a tie vote was taken, and therefore, per your bylaws, the, a county attorney will explain what will happen per your bylaws as soon as I finish with my presentation. The motion that was made was to adopt the ordinance with the map that you find on page...
73.
Thank you very much. It's on page 73. No, excuse me. It's on page 72. And here's the map that is dated February 18th, 2015. That was the motion that was made. Thank you very much.
71 is the motion that was made that night.
Okay, excuse me. Page 71, it is map that is dated February 20th, 2015. It was very confusing at the last workshop that we had or the last meeting that we had because the map stated that they were the Water/Wastewater Master Plan. And at Mr. Hodger's request, we did remove that from the, from the maps because they are not, you're not taking action tonight on the Water/Wastewater Master Plan at all. It has nothing to do with that. You're taking action on reinstating the Water Service Districts, Water and Wastewater Service Districts to our county code. And we have given you three options for those Water/Wastewater Service Districts. The map that's found on page 71 is staff's recommendation, less four subdivisions that were, was the motion that was made by Mr. Moore. On page 72, which is a map dated February 18th, this is staff's recommendation for the Water/Wastewater Service Districts. And another option is found on page 73. It's a map dated February 19th. And this is the existing Water/Wastewater Service District. So you have those options tonight for which map you would like to make your motion be attached to the ordinance. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the county attorney, who's going to explain to you the ramifications if you choose not to enact Water/Wastewater Service Districts, and also how you deal with your tie vote. Thank you.
Yeah, the first thing I'll address is the tie vote, but pursuant to the bylaws, basically, it's like that motion is still hanging out there. Because there was a tie, it's, to envision where we're at, just pretend the motion was just made. Look, so that basically what you have before you right now is that motion, which was to adopt the staff-recommended map, less those subdivisions that Mr. Moore made a motion to withdraw. So that's what's currently pending for a vote.
And that is which one of the two maps?
Page 71.
71.
Thank you.
So currently, the motion that you're called upon to vote on would be to adopt the map on page 71. Couple of issues that the county administrator asked me to kind of explain to you what this is about. I wanted to reiterate, this actually has nothing to do with the master plan that was adopted a few weeks ago. They're not related in any way. One issue I wanted to address, I know Mr. Moore, when he was on the board, and I don't know if other board members had this concern, there was some concern that some of these subdivisions that he asked to be excluded, they didn't want to be compelled to connect to our system. There's actually a state code section that we're not authorized to compel anybody. You actually have to be on the authorized list. 15.22110 of the Virginia Code has a list of counties that can compel people to tie into their system. We're not on that list. So we could not currently compel anybody to tie into our system. We'd actually have to go to the General Assembly and get ourselves, Goochland County's on the list, Emilia, Cumberland, Franklin, Halifax, Nelson. We are not on that list. So we could not currently compel anybody in any subdivision to tie into our system. So I wanted to direct, because that seemed to be a concern at the last meeting, but we, that is not a concern currently in Powhatan. We do not have statutory authority to compel anybody to tie in. So adding somebody to the district doesn't increase their risk of being compelled to tie in. The next question was, what happens if we don't adopt a district? Well, the problem is, or the situation is, in Article 4, we have several articles in our sewer and wastewater, wastewater and water ordinance. Article 4 is the section that deals with how you connect sewer credits, et cetera. And what we've done is, we've actually established the criteria, and it's all tied to the district. We've said, if you're in the district, you can connect to our sewer system by right. If you're not in the district, you have to come to the board and get permission to connect. In fact, if you remember, we had a situation like that a few months ago. Luck Stone came and asked for permission to connect because they weren't in the district. If you're in the district, you can, if you remember, a few months ago, we adopted credits, a credit system for people doing extensions, building pump stations, et cetera. If you're in the district, you're eligible for the credits. If you're not in the district and the board allows you a connection, you are not eligible for the credits. So there's a whole, whole list of ordinances that control how connections are made, and it's all tied to this identified district. So if we eliminate the district, we'll have to rewrite all of that, and we really only have a couple of options at this point. Option one would be what I'll call the Wild West system, which just means anybody can connect. We just say it's wide open. You, if you want to run the line, you can connect to our system. Because if we eliminate the districts, we're, we just have this sewer ordinance, but we don't have any guidelines for connection. So one option would be, anybody can connect anywhere. I think that the board can see the potential ramifications and dangers of a system like that because developers, if they're willing to pay to run the line, they could run from anywhere in the county and we'd have no option. The other alternative would be for every single connection application actually come to the board, which also seems sort of counterintuitive and impractical. And one of the things we're wanting is certainty for developers, and I don't think that would be real positive for developers if you say, we don't really know if you can connect until you come to the board and get permission. And so really, the purpose of having the sewer district is, then all of the language we have as to who can connect by right and who can't, it's basically that middle ground where we've identified the area where you can connect by right, and we've identified the area where you cannot connect by right. And so there would be a lot of, I think, negative ramifications to not adopting a district, whatever, you know, I'm not lobbying for any of the three maps, I don't really care. I'm just saying that it would be wise to adopt a district because otherwise, we're either going to have to have that Wild West scenario or that every request has to come. And the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention in the ordinance that's before you is, we have a couple of places, what we did is, we originally had a water district and a sewer district, and we combined them into one. A couple of places, we still have plural language for districts. So whatever motion is made, I would ask that we include in that motion a request or an instruction that wherever the plural word districts is used, it's just converted to the singular. And with that, I'll answer any questions that anybody may have.
Any questions, the staff, at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Go away, Mr. Butcher.
And I don't know, March or anybody else can be included in answering this. I'm looking at, you know, I'm coming in halfway through on this, and I understand that, so have a little patience if you need to backfill me on this.
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the map on page 72, which is the largest inclusive area. To me, that looks like the better alternative. I'm hearing that there's, the upside is that these people have the option to connect, correct? But they are not ever forced to. Nobody's going to violate property rights.
We cannot force them. We don't have statutory authority to force them.
Right. So if I, if I live in that area, which I do, if my well is functioning perfectly, if my septic tank is functioning perfectly, or worst-case scenario, if I just put in a $15,000 septic system, and a week later, somebody comes by and says, you have to hook up, that won't happen, correct?
Correct.
So I'm looking at the map on page 72 and liking that. The one on 71 is a little more restrictive, and the existing one is extremely restrictive. So I just want to check and make sure I'm seeing this the correct way, that these people would have the option to participate, but not ever be forced.
Well, say not ever. I mean theoretically, you could go to the General Assembly and ask them to include you, but it's a pretty, it'd be a pretty significant step. You'd actually have to take some pretty significant affirmative steps. And even if you went to the General Assembly, the way it's written, the jurisdictions that are on the list, it says they may require, it doesn't say they shall. So it would actually be a pretty serious two-step process of, A, deciding to go to the General Assembly, and then B, deciding to actually implement requirements. So I'm not saying you could never compel somebody, I'm just simply saying that you can't do it today. It would take some pretty significant affirmative steps by this board to be able to do so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, the staff, at this time? Okay. I'm going to go open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-01. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I withheld my vote specifically last time to allow any member of the public Mr. Chairman, I withheld my vote specifically last time to allow any member of the public to speak on this issue. A little bit disappointed, nobody chose to take advantage of that, and we put it off thirty days.
Okay, since no one's come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. I do have a couple of comments to make. I supported the motion to exclude the neighborhoods because of Mr. Moore's concern that people would have been forced to have hooked up to something that they didn't feel that they wanted to have that be forced on them. Now that I have the understanding from Mr. Latchney that that would not take place, I am more comfortable with map seventy-two. I think it's important, if you look at our current map, it does not have the seven-eleven, about two-eight-eight overlay in it, and we, this board voted five-zero to fund a water and sewer design down there, so not to have that in the map would not make much sense to me. So if we didn't adopt either one of the maps on page seventy-one or seventy-two, and we kept the current map, we would have wasted money that we said we wanted to have water and sewer design for. So I am in favor of map seventy-two. I will, we will still have to have a vote on the ordinance, on the vote that had been presented, but that was some of my comments at this time. Anyone else have comments or questions of staff?
Could occur with your comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, the motion was made that evening to adopt map seventy-two, seventy, the map on page seventy-one excluding the, some of the neighborhoods. So I guess we'll call for a revote on that motion, is that correct?
Correct. So vote on the motion to adopt map seventy-one.
Okay, so I'm going to need a motion to, we have a motion, we'll take a vote on it. Excuse me. All in favor of adoption of the map on page seventy-one? All not in favor of the map on page seventy-one? Nay. Motion fails, zero to four. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the same resolution and choose the map dated February the eighteenth, that's on page seventy-two, which includes those areas, and make the motion to change the district to.
The word districts, plural, to district singular.
Correct. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
One comment, Mr. Hodges, thank you for pointing out that the wording on the maps needed to be changed. I think that's important. All in favor of the motion presented?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four-zero. Thank you. Thank you, aye. We'll move on to public hearing item number B, the resolution R. two thousand and fifteen dash zero-seven, authorizing the chairman, vice chair of Palatan County Board of Supervisors to expedite a deed transferring one acre of real property located off State Road six-thirty-three to Shiloh Baptist Church for the sum of ten thousand, seventy-nine dollars. And Tom's going to take this one for us.
Mr. Chairman, we, as you know, the county owns an acre of land that, at this point, we don't really have a use for, and the Shiloh Baptist Church, which is a historic church in this county, longstanding historic church, is filled up there of cemetery, and this land would be very useful for them for expanding their cemetery and continue, allowing them to continue their mission and their service in this county. And therefore, this is a resolution that would authorize the chairman and the vice chairman jointly sign a deed selling this, transferring this property to Shiloh Baptist Church. By state law, we're required to have a public hearing to see if there's any public input on the sale.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman, just one.
Yes, Mr. Hodges.
I know we usually tell them in the past, we've had contracts, deeds, things like that, we've had the county administrator execute, was there a, was there a reason for the chair, vice chair to sign this time under state law or?
It's not a state law requirement, it's just how I drafted it.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff at this time? At this time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance zero-two thousand and fifteen dash zero-seven, transferring one acre of property to Shiloh Baptist Church for ten thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve R. two thousand and fifteen dash oh-seven.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion or comments? I will make one comment. This is something that Mr. Tucker has been working on for.
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years. So government works fast. But it is now being taken care of. Thank you for your perseverance, Mr. Tucker. So I'll call for a vote. All in favor of motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four-zero.
Thank you, God.
I'll second that.
We'll now have another public hearing, ordinance two thousand and fifteen zero-two, granting Palatan Foursquare Church conditional use permit to operate a place of worship on property located at twenty-four oh-eight New Dorset Circle. Mr. Altman's going to take this one for us. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. This evening, we have a public hearing to consider requests submitted by Foursquare, Palatan Foursquare Church for a conditional use permit to operate a place of worship on property located at twenty-eight, twenty-four oh-eight New Dorset Circle. The property in question is zoned commercial, and within the commercial district, places of worship, if, for those, when we went through this discussion with the new zoning ordinance, were added as a conditional use. The property is currently owned by British Car Service, Inc. Formerly, there was an automobile repair shop on site. The membership of Palatan Foursquare Church has gone in and begun the renovation of that building to allow for the establishment of their church. We found out, kind of, a little bit out of order, we ended up having to, we found out that they were operating a church about this conditional use permit. We went out and cited them for the notice of, permission to notice of violation. Within the next day, they were in our office to begin the process of applying for their conditional use permit. The church has been very good to work with on this matter, and we've been working with them to try to get this resolved as quickly as possible. The planning commission conducted a public hearing to consider the requests at their February third meeting. At that meeting, they voted five-o to recommend approval of the requests to the board with the conditions as presented, and I will read those conditions for you in the audience. The conditions that would be implied to this conditional use permit should the board approve it is, one, the applicant shall consent to an annual administrative inspections by the planning department staff for compliance with the requirements of the CUP. Two, the applicants shall sign a, the list of the adopted conditions for the CUP signify an acceptance and the intent to comply with these conditions. Three, failure to comply with the conditions of the CUP may result in the issuance of a notice of violation by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator may present the CUP to the board of supervisors for revocation if the NOV is not resolved as directed. Upon issuance of a third notice of violation of the permit and failure to, of the permit holder to appeal to the board of zoning appeals, the zoning administrator shall present the CUP to the board of supervisors for revocation. Four, all activities associated with the CUP shall be in compliance with all state and federal laws. The site shall be fully, shall fully comply with all applicable provisions of section eighty-three dash eight, three eighty-two of the Palatan County zoning ordinance throughout the life of the CUP. And the plan entitled, quote, "proposed church site dated one-eight-two thousand and fifteen prepared by Stephen C. Letchford," shall be considered the conceptual development plan for the place of worship. If there are any questions that the board has, and me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of staff at this time? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to make a statement? If not required, you can if you, you want to.
I'd say so.
If you do, please come to the mic.
My name is Matt Rodenhour, pastor of Community Life Church, and I stated pretty much everything in the last meeting that was, I think, needed to be said, but our goal and our desire is to be within compliance, you know, with the county and make sure that that stays that way. My apologies were accepted before for not knowing everything ahead of time. We kind of thought we were just, we were already in compliance, didn't, were not aware. So glad that we're moving forward in the right direction, looking forward to continuing to serve our county in the way that we're doing that. And one of the biggest ways is with the program, Feeding Palatan. It's a big ministry of our church, and it's been effective to reach a lot of people in our county, and it's been a blessing to them. So this expansion of the building will allow us to be more effective in that ministry. So we're looking forward to it. Appreciate y'all's consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance two thousand and fifteen zero-two, granting conditional use permit to Palatan Foursquare Church. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Any other questions of staff at this time? Well, Mr. Norvick, this is in your district typically on a conditional use permit, we allow the representatives from the district to make a motion unless you don't feel comfortable.
No, I would like to make a comment real quick, Mr. Chairman.
You most certainly can.
First of all, probably a month or a month and a half ago, Matt, Melissa, and I talked about this in the donut shop, and it's nice to see something coming to a bit of a resolution here, hopefully. And also, I'd like to say that a couple of members of the staff and I talked about, just, I guess, we got in the weeds just a little bit about the property and the use of it, and after a few emails flew back and forth, everything was handled very professionally, very thoroughly. The questions I had were all answered to my complete satisfaction, and it's really neat to see Palatan operate that way where, you know, we don't come, we don't want to come down with a huge hammer on somebody, we approach it with common sense. They took it fairly well, but yet, we got action on it. Questions were answered. Everything, from my point of view, worked really well in the last month on this issue, so happy to see them here tonight. I make a motion that we approve ordinance, let's see, two thousand and fifteen oh-two, granting the conditional use permit.
And we're going to coach you a little bit here.
I'm going to get my Yola card.
It's actually, that language is actually in the ordinance.
Okay, so he doesn't need to do it. As long as it's in the ordinance.
I move approval of it.
The language is actually in the ordinance.
You don't need to say it. They protect it.
It is in there.
It's in the ordinance. So, thank you.
Second motion.
Okay. Comments? I do have one comment. I agree with Mr. Norvick, I think this thing has been handled very well. I was one of Mr. Swinson's customers when it was not as nice as it was, and then he called me as this thing started to kind of come to surface, and I went over there, and the work that y'all have already done was tremendous, and the work that you were proposing to do was very exciting to me. You know, Jim tends to be Jim, and he repairs MGs, so we have to remember that. So I am in support of this, along with Mr. Moore, but I do think that it was handled very well by staff and moved through the planning commission, and I certainly appreciate everybody's hard work.
One last comment.
Yes, sir.
I want Mr. Norvick on my time. It took me fourteen years. Took me thirty days.
You got to hang out at the donut shop more often, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four, four, four-zero. Thank you, good luck. The next public hearing we have is ordinance two thousand and fifteen zero-three, granting Jean R. Hertzler a conditional use permit, place of manufacturing home on property located twenty-nine thirteen Edith Lane. Mr. Altman's going to take this one for us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the second public hearing, well, my second public hearing this evening that you have is a request submitted by Mr. Hertzler to request a CUP for the placement of a manufactured home on property located at twenty-nine thirteen Edith Lane. The subject property is zoned RU, which is our residential utility district, and a manufactured home is listed as a conditional use in that district. There is just a few, happened to, can you scroll one more? Across, to the south on this slide, across the street, there is an existing mobile home in, within the RU district, so that property across the street is also zoned RU. The planning commission conducted a public hearing at their April third meeting to solicit public comment on the request. At that meeting, it was determined that the request isn't with keeping of, with the comprehensive plan, and after some discussion with staff, planning commission voted five-o to recommend approval of the requests to the board with the conditions as presented. Those conditions are, one, the applicant shall consent to annual administrative inspections by the planning department staff for compliance with the requirements of the CUP. Two, the applicant shall sign a list of adopted conditions for the CUP signify an acceptance and intent to comply with these conditions. Three, failure to comply with the conditions of the CUP may result in the issuance of a notice of violation by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator may present the CUP to the board of supervisors for revocation if the NOV is not resolved as directed. Upon issuance of a third NOV of the permit and failure of the permit holder to appeal to the board of zoning appeals, the zoning administrator shall present the CUP to the board of supervisors for revocation. Four, the applicant shall install skirting to screen the foundation pillars and underside of the manufactured home with any of the material listed, as listed in the zoning ordinance, and the skirting shall be maintained throughout the life of the dwelling. Five, the skirting must be installed within sixty days of the issuance of certificate of occupancy and be maintained throughout the life of the CUP. And six, the address numbers need to be a minimum of four inches in height and reflective so they are highly visible from, in both, from both directions on either lane. Address numbers shall be maintained throughout the life of the CUP. Seven, all activities associated with the CUP shall be in compliance with all state and federal laws, and the site should fully comply with the applicable provisions of section eighty-three dash three fifty-two of the Palatan County zoning ordinance throughout the life of the CUP. And seven, this conditional use permit shall be issued to Jean R. Hertzler to place a manufactured home on the lot. I'm open for any questions. I do know that Mr. Hertzler has a representative here this evening. If you have any questions for him, be happy to answer any questions of the board.
Any questions of staff at this time? Would, I guess the applicant's not here. Agent, would an agent want to make a comment? It's not necessary.
Mr. Phil, if you have a question, just go ahead and ask it.
Dated that, all right. Thank you. No questions of staff at this time. We'll hold a public hearing on ordinance zero-two thousand and fifteen dash three, granting a conditional use permit to Jean R. Hertzler at twenty-nine thirteen Edith Lane. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Hodges, I think this is in your district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, unless there is any for the comment by the board members.
All right. I did actually talk with Mr. Hertzler earlier this week. He stopped by, he was unable to be here, so that's why he needed a representative to be here today, but certainly in favor of this. So I would move to approve ordinance two thousand and fifteen dash oh-three as presented since it already has the magic language in there for us.
Correct. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four-zero. That finishes our public hearings. At this time, we'll move into action item eleven A, which is a resolution R. two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen, amending the FYF two thousand and fifteen Palatan operating budget by transferring forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars from capital outlay within the fine rescue fund for additional staffing of emergency service personnel. Chief Singer, I think, is going to handle this for us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Milton, board members, my responders who are here, and citizens that are still here. Yep, we're booting up.
Before Chief Singer begins, I just wanted to let the board know that the presentation that he is presenting tonight is at the dais in front of you, if you can't see the slides from here.
Dan, we're not moving. Okay, what we're talking about is our ALS providers, our advanced life support providers. These are our special providers, our EMTI intermediates and ETPs, paramedics. These are licensed individuals who do tasks beyond that of the regular emergency medical technician. They provide such services as cardiac monitoring, innovation, where we take over the airway, control the airway, and administering IV medications. There we go. To get these, this type of training is very intense, especially for volunteers who are volunteering their time. Just to get a regular EMT basic certification takes about a hundred and fifty-four hours. We have lots of EMTs here in the county, but fewer intermediates and paramedics who can do these advanced skills. As you see here, intermediate is another two-hundred-and-seventy-two hours of training just to get to the intermediate level, and then to go all the way to a paramedic is additionally five-hundred-and-twenty-four hours. So just for a volunteer to get this training, you're looking at four-hundred-and-twenty-five to nine-hundred-and-thirty-five hours of certification training, and that's before they actually go into the field to begin their, their pre-secctionship into the field. So what's our current coverage, ALS coverage right now? Are we having, during the daytime, we have contract services with Emergency Services Solution, ESS. They provide two advanced life support crews during the daytime, Monday through Friday. One, five AM to five PM at the village station here in Palatan, and then also one at seven o'clock to seven PM at the Fine Creek Station up on Huguenot Trail. The Palatan Rescue Squad covers the rest of the times, from seven PM to five AM, twenty-four hours a day on the weekends. So that's over fifty-one-hundred hours a year that the Palatan Volunteer Rescue Squad provides those services to us, and often they do that with multiple units available and multiple unit staff. Some staffing hours from the Rescue Squad of the fifty-one-hundred hours last year, they advised that they had ALS coverage twenty-eight-hundred hours of that fifty-one-hundred, and they ran eleven-hundred-and-forty-nine EMS calls with an average response time of thirteen minutes and forty-three seconds. During those staffing hours, we have several stations the Rescue Squad runs out of, both here in the village and then also the satellite stations. The Huguenot Station, which is our public safety center, which is combined with Fire Station Number Two. safety center, which is combined with fire station number two, they don't have exact numbers for the number of hours it was staffed, but that unit there ran 31 calls. The Ballsville Station was staffed for 249 hours and ran 67 calls, and the Fine Creek Station was staffed for 50 hours, but we don't know the exact number of calls there. The problem we have right now, when I brought this motion to the board, was the number of ALS providers we have to cover all that time period. Currently, we have two ALS providers who live in the county and one ALS provider who lives outside the county who is certified to give these life-giving measures to our citizens, but we also have two other people who have been certified recently and will be hopefully getting cleared here soon. So, even at 5,000 hours divided by the five providers that we have, there's still over 1,000 hours per provider that would need to be covered by each one of those providers to be able to provide for our citizens during all those hours. During 2014, 46% of the emergency calls that we had processed by our 911 center met the criteria for advanced life support dispatch, such things as chest pains, difficulty breathing, anaphylaxis, major trauma. And as we move into what we call emergency medical dispatching, I'm expecting that percentage to rise. As we look at the number of calls we had last year, 2,230 EMS calls, that's up 10%, 10.8% from the year preceding. And as you can see, the division here, approximately 46% of those met the criteria for ALS, while 44% met the criteria for basic life support. And then, in the middle there, we have 10% of what we call sick calls, which are some of those calls that sort of can go either way, and we will move towards emergency medical dispatching and further classify our event types. You'll see that probably some of those calls will actually become ALS calls instead of just BLS calls. So, during the nighttime last year, the Rescue Squad, the volunteer Rescue Squad, ran 538 calls during the weekdays, so we had a potential of 248 of those calls needing advanced life support. On the weekend, when they're covering 24 hours a day, they ran 611 calls, which gives us a potential of 281 ALS calls that will need advanced life support. This is the new slide that you received earlier. I was asked to gather information comparing us to the other jurisdictions around, especially jurisdictions that are smaller like Palatine. As you can see there, Chesterfield itself, actually, which is our larger jurisdiction, they have 21 ALS providers on duty at a minimum, 24 hours a day. So, per capita, that breaks it down to approximately 15,600 people are covered for each ALS provider they have there in Chesterfield. Palatine, right now, of course, during the daytime, we have two ALS providers, so our per capita there is 14,500, but then in nighttime, we only have one provider, which puts our per capita one per our entire population of 29,000. Every other jurisdiction on there, with the exception of Amelia and Cumberland, provide at least one life support, ALS life support provider 24 hours a day, seven days a week, some of them providing a lot more. As you see, Dinwiddie has no volunteer ALS providers, and New Kent County have no volunteer ALS providers. Both of them, when I talked to them, said that their volunteers couldn't meet the standards up to ALS anymore and had folded. So, Dinwiddie said, 70 years ago, they went through a transition and couldn't hold up, and New Kent also, same thing over the past five years, they just haven't, the volunteers have not been able to keep the training up because it's very strenuous to keep that training up. So, we're asking, we're asking to add one ALS provider, so we'll have our contract person, ESS, supply one ALS provider to staff an advanced life support chase vehicle or quick response vehicle. This vehicle would be staffed here at the village station and be able to respond with the basic life support crews to assist them in evaluating the patient and transporting the patient if needed. But the good thing about having them in a chase vehicle would be that they could go evaluate the patient, and then if the BLS crew can handle the patient, they can return to service to provide ALS services to other citizens in the county, and that way, we can provide for them. If the volunteers do have an advanced life support unit staffed, then we could also just take the provider and put a second unit in service and help spread out the number of calls that we have and providing to our citizens. So, that's, we're requesting the 46,300 be transferred from the EMS transport fees that we already have within the budget to, over to staff this unit during the nighttimes and the weekends. And I'm open to any questions, if you all have any.
Questions, staff, at this time?
I do, Mr. Hodge. Chief Singer, I know you, we've had a lot of data coming in since our workshop.
Sir.
I've been trying to review as much as we can, but sometimes it kind of gets lost in the shuffle. I know one question had been asked, and I'll let you reiterate this or speak to it. I don't want to try to summarize all that data and emails that you guys have amongst yourselves, amongst the Rescue Squad and yourselves. You guys are the experts that boots on the ground. I think Mr. Williams had asked the question at the workshop, or one of us did, I think it was Mr. Williams, had asked about, in your professional opinion, how many volunteer ALS equals one paid provider for that weekend? I know we're talking about, I think the public gets confused sometimes when people come up here and say, we've got, you know, you don't have the coverage. We're speaking about, obviously, nights and weekends to begin with, obviously.
Yes, sir.
If I'm correct on that.
Yes, sir.
So, you always drill down these details, get the facts. So, based on that, the question stands on that night and weekend, how many volunteers, in your professional opinion, would equal that one ALS provider for coverage, as appropriate in your professional judgment?
Right. Right now, since the volunteers run six different crews, is the way they have their staffing set up, at least one ALS provider per each crew, so we would have an ALS provider on duty 24 hours, seven days a week, 365. So, at least six fully cleared, available, advanced life support providers, so we'll have one on duty, would be my recommendation, at a minimum.
And if I'm right, right now, presently, right now, and I'm looking back at my notes because I tried to run the numbers and do my math myself, and I think you're right, we have two inside, one outside, and then two that just came on. So, that's five right now. Is that right?
From the stats that was provided the other day, we have three cleared ALS providers running, one new one already cleared that we're trying to get worked on the schedule, so that would be four.
Okay.
And two more being in the process of being cleared.
Okay, so it's four now and two in the process of clearing. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Which is six. How long does it take to clear somebody?
It depends on the number of calls they're able to run and the number of contacts and different type of patients they can deal with.
All right.
So, it varies by person what their skill level is, and it varies by the number of calls they're exposed to.
All right. But that person, you educate me on this because I'm not the one who's got the knowledge. You are. Those two that are cleared have to run those calls, those ones, I guess, you could consider, for lack of a better term, training. They're in that training mode. They've got the education, but now it's the
Practical application.
Like 4H, learn by doing. Now, we're going to go out there and apply it on the ground, okay?
Sir.
In your experience, has in the past, when those people are being in that mode, are they shadowed by somebody or not?
Yes, sir. That's the point. They were with an ALS provider right then, and they're provided the skills, and they shadow, internship through precepting.
Is there a standard in the industry on how many calls after, or is it the judgment of your mentor saying you're ready?
It's a little of both. I was advised by the Rescue Squad that they're using their regional medical council release policy. I have not received a copy of that yet, but they're following what the regular regional guidelines are to release people.
Okay. Do you know how, what those guidelines say about that timeframe, or the number of calls, or what the metric is?
No, sir. I don't know yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Any other questions, Chief, at this time?
I do, sir.
Mr. Norvig.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Chief Singer, we've talked about this before, one-on-one, this issue, and we talked about it at the workshop, but something kind of came up during the workshop, and I just want you to be able to respond or make a comment. A little bit of this, the side of this issue that troubles me is, last week, we had five volunteer firefighters stand up and make comments, and all five of them said they felt that they had no input. They felt like they should be consulted in some way. I know, in the new organization, you're building in like a senior policy group to help make decisions, the chiefs or assistant chiefs from firehouses or representatives. That's a wonderful thing. I would just like to ask, why do you think that they almost to the last feel that they had no input, and will that be corrected in the future, and do you think, for morale purposes, it's important to correct that before we move forward with this? And I'd like your comments on that.
Yeah. I do feel sorry that it's been such, it's been more of a rushed issue. I agree there, but I also feel that it is a critical need of the citizens of Palatine County that they do get provided these ALS services. I do not feel that we're being well-covered right now. I feel that we need to have an ALS provider to respond, to be able to respond, to come help our BLS crews to handle the patients that they have. So, yes, I would say it was probably rushed. They didn't get as much input as they could have had, but I've also been trying to meet with them, but due to their schedules as volunteers, their work schedules and everything else, we have not been able to meet since the last workshop, and even before then, they did not bring anything to me. I understand they, I guess they feel that they didn't have input, but they never offered any input otherwise. They did not, yes, Mr. Norvig.
Okay. Sorry. Do you have more, Chief? I don't want to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
Okay. You know, when I was going around campaigning, I made sure to stop off at the firehouse in District 2, behind Henry's Market there, and just chat with them and see. My basic question was, what do you need? Not what is on your dream sheet necessarily, but what do you really need? And it's interesting that we had Mr. Wolf come up and comment earlier. The first thing out of their mouth was training money, training, training, and then recruitment, retention, and the other thing that was mentioned was, we need to keep morale high. So, here's where I'm going. The first time you and I talked, the number of ALS providers was two.
That's correct, sir.
And that, to me, said, wow, this house is on fire. We need to do something here. Okay? Now, with Mr. Hodge bringing up numbers and asking you, now we have a number that's four plus two coming. I'm wondering if this is still the urgent need that we agreed was there a few weeks ago, but now with these new numbers of ALS providers, is that need so urgent that we need to move ahead without the input of your firefighters in the county?
I still believe that it is an urgent need at this time.
Okay.
I know, I gave you more email information, obviously, with some of the emails that came out this week.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, citing some of the incidents that we continue to have problems with. It's not that our ALS providers are not there, but sometimes, especially when they're coming from home, they're too far away to intervene and be able to intervene and do what they need to do to provide for that patient. And those are some of the instances that we still have, where by staffing the QRV and having it leaving the building at the same time as the BLS unit is, and meeting, you know, going right to the scene and starting to provide that care, determining if they need to transport that with the crew and provide that ALS services, I feel that's more critical than waiting on the provider to come further away, to a further distance. That's the critical information. And I know, I know it's very personal to them. I agree with them. I've been a volunteer firefighter until just December. I've been a volunteer firefighter for over 35 years. I do understand the need for input, but I see this as a critical need, that we need to provide this to our citizens.
Okay.
And I am more than willing to work with some of the plans, obviously, that have been thrown out there. If the volunteers are able to work and we can work on when they would like to be staffed and when we need to make up those differences, that is obviously part of the plans that we can go forward with. But I do feel that we need to have that coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
So, that just brought up one more then. So, I think it was Mr., former Chief Butcher that said, have the volunteers identify gaps, then cover those. Is that a reasonable plan to do in the near term?
Sure, that it does. I've already talked with the provider, Emergency Services Solutions. They are open up to a per need, a PRN type of situation, if we need to do that. They are available to do that. That option had not been brought to me from the volunteers yet. Like I said, we have not been able to meet since the workshop, and I receive little input. I mean, I met with their board. I met with some of them beforehand. They could have brought this, you know, some of those options up, but they did not bring those options up, and they just feel that it's just the county telling them this is the way it's going to be.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to mention that Chief Singer complied with everything we asked him to do, from my point of view. I've got the packet of email that you sent. I found the information very complete, summarized, easy to understand. That kind of stuff helps us make our decisions, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Norvig. Chief, so what you're saying is, you would be willing to sit with the volunteers. So, if you, how far in advance would you have to set your schedule with ESS? So, is it two weeks in advance? Is it, I mean, do you have any idea?
When I talk to them about that, they, when they do that with other jurisdictions, they usually do that a month ahead of time.
Okay.
So, they would like, by the 15th of this month, would like to know what coverage we need for April.
So, then if the volunteer ALS providers could say, here are the days that I'm working.
Right. And they were able, and they were able to staff the ALS vehicle and be able to respond immediately to ALS calls, not necessarily come from home when needed, but staff the ALS vehicle and be able to respond out and immediately treat the patients that meet the need, then yes, that's a very viable option.
Okay. And would that reduce to 46,300 needed, or?
Yes, it should. And that number, since we've been delayed, has probably dropped anyway.
Okay. Because it's only through a certain time.
Right. Yeah, this is only through July 1st, is what we're looking at now.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up on that.
Yes, sir.
Chief, what's before us, and you mentioned, I mean, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Norvig's comment, and that is, if you had a schedule from the volunteer ALS that we have now, I know we've got the two in training and the four, and we're close to that sixth number in the sense of you're on your own, but not quite there. If you had that schedule, then, is what we're looking at here, is this an agreement on a per need basis agreement with that provider, or is it a contract, and that's it? One, you know, one covers it all the time. In other words, what you have before us in the sense of the authorization, is it a per need, or is it not a per need contract? It's more of a, we need one nights and weekends, that's it?
It could be either way. If the volunteers were able to provide, obviously, a specific time that they would be there and specific times that need to be covered, then a PRN basis is fine, as long as we have one ALS provider to meet the need of the citizens.
The contract hasn't yet been written. We have a contract. We'd be writing an addendum to the contract, so that's what the chief is saying. The addendum could be written either way. The board requested it to be.
Okay. Any other questions, staff, at this time? Can we get a motion here? I have a couple. I would like to see us, I think, the need, the needs there. I do want to have a motion that would say up to 46,300, because that's the original figure. We know it's going to change, so we know it won't go over that, but it could go less than that. But I want to make sure that we're capturing, we're doing two things. Not that we haven't respected or we haven't honored the volunteers, but I think it's important that we do that. And if they can, the individuals I met with all talked about that they do this because they love the community, and if they can commit to a time, and they're committing to that, I fully expect that they will honor that, and if it reduces the cost, great, but I think it's important that we respect their service. And I would encourage us to make sure we have that staffing plan somehow put together to honor their service to the county, but yet also make sure that we're meeting the need to provide ALS service that we need for our citizens, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. I move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-16 up to $46,300, and we direct the chief to work with Mr. Beach and the heads of the rescue, the heads of the rescue squads to work out the coverage calendar. Is that a fair way to put it, that Mr. Milton and Mr. Norvig have been talking about? Is that clear, what I'm asking for?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and I would just add to that with a friendly amendment, that we just, that the, if the schedule provides for coverage, that any paid coverage would just be on a per need basis. In other words, if there is a true gap in some kind of coverage with the five onboard, the two coming, until we reach, I guess, that magic number of six, then we'll deal with the EMD stuff later, I guess, in the summer when we get to that stage. That's another issue, but right now, I see it that basically, I'm in favor of a per need basis with the paid provider where, but first, you're right, I agree with Mr. Milton and Mr. Tucker, that first, there's a schedule of our ALS providers that we have now, and if that schedule meets those needs, there's no need for that paid provider at all. If that schedule, for some reason, people can get sick, they can get ill, things can happen, you can break your leg. If that doesn't meet the need, then obviously, it would just be a per need basis. In other words, just, it might be infrequently here, there, and everywhere, and I think, even, I think, when I'm looking at that, I think we might have one more coming in April, and we might have one more coming in May, if I have my numbers there right. So, it looks to me like this is a very temporary matter, to me at least, as far as a policy. That's a long, that's a long-winded amendment to your motion, Mr. Tucker, but the basic point is it would be on a per need basis, not just, the schedule would control, the schedule would be controlling issue here of coverage, not necessarily, we just don't have enough numbers, so we're short.
So, Tom, can I redo my motion at this point, or do we have to defeat it, or what?
Or my motion's
Well, I haven't heard a second yet, so the motion's still
All right, then. Let me try it again, then. I move that we approve R. 2015-16 up to $46,300. I move that we approve R. 2015-16 up to forty-six thousand three hundred dollars, with the chief directed to work with Mr. Beach and the rescue squad chiefs to work out and avail, a coverage calendar and reduce the forty-six thousand three hundred to a need-only basis. Does that capture close enough?
I think that, as a per need contract basis, yes, I think that does it. Tom, is that fair?
I think that's clear.
I think the intent of the policymakers is clear.
That's my motion, and Mr. Melton?
Any questions or comments on the motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Singer, for your presentation, and to all the volunteers, thank you for all the hard work that y'all do. Hopefully, this thing will work its way out to be a positive as we all want it to be.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one comment, and that is, many times tonight, it's been brought up about the lack of training in the budget for volunteers, and I just would encourage volunteers to maybe stick around and listen to the budget presentation. Normally, the room empties out before the budget presentation, but you may find some things of interest to the volunteers in the budget presentation.
Hand, hand.
Thank you, thank you, Pat, for that. Let's see, where were we here?
Eleven B.
Eleven B, I apologize. We'll now move on to action item Resolution R. 2015-18, authorizing Chairman of Powhatan Board of Supervisors to sign a request to the governor for local workforce development area designation.
This item is found on page one forty-nine of your agenda. Powhatan County is a member of the Capital Region Workforce Partnership. It's a joint collaboration of the seven jurisdictions that are within the RR-PDC. The purpose of that organization is to oversee the Federal Workforce Investment Act, which is the WIA. Congress has changed the WIA effective July fifteenth to become the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, the WIAOA. And in order for our region to continue to receive funding from the federal government, all the local agencies must approve the change, and we do that by having our board chairman sign a form, which is included in the document, this evening. So the item before you is authorizing the Chairman of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors to sign that document in order to have us continue having a workforce partnership. I stand ready to answer any questions.
So if I understand this right, this is just a pro forma movement to get us in line with what the feds require?
Correct, sir.
It is a, it is basically to say that we will continue to be part of the local workforce. We could opt out, which we would then try to do something on our own, which would be monumental in itself. We could choose to join another association, which would also be a monumental task, because they'd have to agree for us to be part of that. I do sit on this board. You know, this does not bind us to giving any more funds than we have set, which we would fund per user. This is just basically a cleanup item, so to speak.
No downside, Mr. Chairman?
None that I see at all. Actually, I see upside with us continuing in it, because as I've mentioned to several of you, there's some monies that are going to be set to the side for special projects, and I have actually begun the process to fill out the paperwork to submit us for a special project that would hopefully help us address our workforce needs more in the county versus outside of the county.
And the people of the county, thank you.
We just need to get it done first, get the approval, so. Can I get a motion on this? Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-18.
Can I get a second? I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to item Resolution R. 2015-19, meaning FY two thousand, operating budget transferring twenty-three thousand dollars from the contingency for the design of a water line in the Route 522-617 intersection project.
At the, Mr. Melas is going to present this item to you as background information. At the time that the park was opened, the Powhatan Park, State Park, excuse me, we knew that the intersection had to be redesigned and reconstruction, reconstructed in order to handle the traffic going into the park. And at that time, we had discussions that if we were going to be redesigning a section of the road on 522, that we may want to, at the time it was being torn up, put in the water pipe. And this would be the water pipe that would come down from the approximately where the correctional centers are, eventually down to Route sixty. So the item before you is, underestimate the cost of having VDOT design that water pipe into the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Melas.
Resolution R. 2015-19 allows the county to move forward with the installation of the roughly seventeen hundred linear feet of sixteen-inch ductile iron water line in conjunction with VDOT's project. The thought behind this was putting in the water line now, as opposed to at a later date, coming back and tearing up brand-new, fresh asphalt at VDOT's just place, so that we can install water lines. We've been working, actually, we started working on this project with DCR, then VDOT's taken over the project, so now we've been working with VDOT's design firm, Michael Baker, and they have actually provided us a cost estimate for twenty-three thousand dollars for design of the, of the betterment of this project for VDOT. The estimated construction cost is for the project, the preliminary estimated construction cost is three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And I'll open the floor up to any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I think on this one, we were, when we previously had the discussion, you can refresh my recollection, that the design's going to be out of the roadway, is that right? Am I right on that?
That's still being hashed out. Some of it may be, depending on where the other utilities actually lie. There's some buried utilities within the right-of-way that are outside of the road. Now, depending on where they're located, will depend on where the water line actually goes.
Okay. I think I know we were striving to try that.
Yeah, my understanding, Mr. Hodge, is that they're trying very hard to put it in the right-of-way, but not under the pavement per se.
Exactly, that's what we discussed, correct? I was just reaffirming that. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hodge. Any other questions, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R. 2015-19.
I'll second that.
Questions, comments? I'll make one quick comment. I look at this very similar to the 7-Eleven situation. We're being fore, you know, forethinking, we're preparing for the future with designing this, and Mr. Hodge did remind us that we're trying to make sure this is outside of the right-of-way and not wasting money in the future. So I'm in support of the motion, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would reiterate that what we're trying to do here is keep from having to dig the road up twice.
Yep.
The road is going to be dug up once to put the water line in. In the meantime, probably before that happens, if we don't do this, the road's going to be widened to three lanes with turn lanes going into the park, and we would have to do it again. So if it's three hundred thousand dollars to do it once, we're probably talking about another two hundred thousand dollars on top of that to do it the second time. That's not a good use of the taxpayer's money, even though it sits there as a dry pipe for at least two years, because shoveling the ground for this project is probably not going to start until the latter part of 2016. It's still better use of taxpayer's money to do it now and let it sit for two years than to redo it in two years.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of the resolution as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four zero. On to item D, Resolution 2015-R22, confirming a declaration of emergency for Powhatan County on February sixteenth, 2015. Chief Singer's going to take this real quickly.
Chairman Melton, the board members, this is just the action resolution from us declaring an emergency during Winter Storm Octavia back on February fifteenth. As you remember, we were scheduled to get approximately twelve inches of snow. We got a very good amount of that snow. And in preparation for that, the governor declared a state of emergency throughout the Commonwealth about three o'clock in the afternoon. We felt it very proactive to go ahead and do a local declaration of emergency in case we did need resources from the state. We did not predict that we needed any resources, and it turned out, we did not. So this is just a resolution confirming that you declared a local state of emergency, and then that on Wednesday, two days later, on the eighteenth, we closed that declaration. So it's just a motion for you all to, that you officially do agree that you, we were in a local state of emergency, and then closing it.
And that gets, that's put us in line if we needed to get state.
Correct. If we had needed resources from the state for the resources, whether National Guard or plows or more sheltering, if we'd lost power and stuff, that would have given us the opportunity to gotten it, to get that.
Thank you.
I only had one question, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know if we've done that before, just, I'm just trying to remember how that operates. I know that, in the resolution, I know, it goes kind of a chain of command, you know, and the thing, and I wasn't sure, I know that Mr. Melton signed it, which is fine, but was the director and deputy director just unavailable at that time?
No, actually, the director is the county administrator.
Okay, you didn't see that slide.
Yeah, and the two of them, go ahead, and made the direct declaration.
I just wanted to make sure, we had a trial run, I guess it was a dry run, so to speak. We didn't need any resources, but we could have.
Right. And especially since the governor had already declared one throughout the Commonwealth, pertinent to go ahead and have a local one, instead of trying to track you down in a foot of snow if we didn't need something, so.
No, good enough. I'm just trying to see how the operation works on the operational side. I know we've talked about it, but, you know, putting it into practice is a different thing.
And in fact, the state declaration is still open right now, because of the stuff down in Wise County, some of the other places, so. But we, that's why I'm saying we need to close our action on the eighteenth of February.
Chief hunted me down, walked up my sidewalk in the snow, and asked me to sign it, so. And he got out of my driveway without getting stuck.
Mr. Chairman, move or approve Resolution R. 2015-22?
Second.
All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four zero. This time, we have a discussion item. We'll move on to 12A, Strategic Action Plan Monthly Update, and Ms. Wyler's going to take this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to do this from the podium, if you'll give me a minute just to walk down there.
And I think we have a copy of this, do we not?
Gentlemen, on the dais in front of you is a copy of the adopted strategic action plan. It looks like this. This will be on the website for all to see at any time. At the time that you adopted it on February second, you asked that I give you monthly updates on the status of the items that you find. The items are found, starting on page, starting on, excuse me, starting on page nine, and they're called the implementation steps for the three-year priorities. You created three-year priorities. The staff took the three-year priorities and developed steps to implement your three-year priorities. Your three-year priorities, of course, follow along with your vision. So you also have on, in front of you, a handout that has many colors, yellow, green, and blue. This is the status report. You'll see a status report that looks like this every month when I come before you. You should have this also in front of you on the dais. I was just going to go down each one of your priorities and let you know the status of that. So, starting with LD one, which is complete the zoning and subdivision ordinance updates. I'm on page one of eleven of the status report. If you can see that, items one through six are complete. Going, we've already adopted, you've already adopted a zoning ordinance, you're now working on a subdivision ordinance. What is ongoing now is for the board to hold a public hearing and recommend, staff to recommend to you adoption of the subdivision ordinance. You had a workshop last week on it. We will continue working on that. The next item, which is priority LD two, update the comprehensive plan. As you can see in the handout, this is scheduled to start in September of 2015. LD three, prepare the county's, prepare for the county's responsibility to address stormwater management. This also will begin in September of 2015. Going to page two of eleven, priority EC one, create and implement an economic development plan to include agribusiness. Items one through five have been complete, which is, we have begun the plan development. It's estimated that we will complete the plan in August of 2015. At this time, I'd like to address EC two, which is part of that contract. EC two is to redirect and reconstitute the EDA, and that will, a recommendation will come forward to you in August of 2015 with the economic development plan. There was discussion about this at the last workshop, on whether or not, in fact, priority EC two was included as part of the scope of the economic development plan, and there seemed to be a little bit of confusion. I'm going to read from the scope of work for the economic development plan. It says, evaluation of the county's economic development authority, e.g., structure, policy, previous activities, will also be completed. So indeed, the consultant is addressing the EDA. The confusion arose where the consultant misunderstood the questions from Mr. Williams, in that the consultant is not going to recommend members for the EDA. That is entirely a board function. So again, priority EC two will be addressed as part of the economic development plan. Priority EC three, which is locate and expand at least one major business during the next three years. As you can see on this, we're not scheduled to start this until September of 2015, once you adopt the economic development plan. I want you to know that Mr. March Altman has actually been working on this since he started work for the county, and in fact, prior to Mr. Altman being here, I also was working on this, on a very limited basis, of course. One of the things that was brought to the public's attention was that Mr. Altman is meeting in private with developers, and he may be meeting in secret with developers. We just want you to know that as part of bringing businesses into the county, you do meet with developers, you do meet with developers at locations that are convenient to the developer, which could be most often not in the county. In fact, think of Chesterfield, who went to China to meet with developers, to bring a local business. We meet where it's convenient to meet with developers. We also do meet with developers in private, because what developers, before they're ready to bring a development in public, they want that kept confidential, because developers are in competition with other developers. They don't want everyone to know that they're bringing in a Lowe's to Powhatan County. No, no one is discussing bringing a Lowe's. That was only an example. But developers, if someone is potentially bringing in, they don't want anyone else to know about that. So yes, Mr. Altman does meet in secret with developers, and in fact, I've been in meetings with Mr. Williams and developers at a developer's business, and we, those are confidential. I've also been in meetings with Mr. Hodge and Mr. Williams and myself, in meetings where, three or four times, a developer said, this is confidential, do not let this. So we are working on EC three. Stave Mill was one of the examples. I met with the developer, I met with the developer in private, I worked out a development agreement on Stave Mill at a time when we had agreed to some terms. I, at that time, brought it forward to Mr. Lachney, who worked on an agreement, and then we brought it forward to the board. When we meet with developers as staff, we cannot make any commitments to a developer. We can only make suggestions to the board. All decisions must be made by the board, and all your decisions must be made in public. So no transactions can be held behind closed doors, and no promises can be made, and Mr. Altman can't be making any secret deals. But we do meet with developers, and it's part of the normal economic development process. So with that, I'd like to go on and point out that as part of the economic development plan, we had mentioned to you that there will be public meetings held as the economic development plan, and the dates that we gave you were not correct. I want you to know that the dates of the focus groups are going to be on March twelfth. There will be two focus groups, where we're asking to meet with development community and the real estate community, and there will be one focus group where we're asking to meet with anyone related to agribusiness or agritourism. There will be two community meetings that are open to everybody in the community. One is on March nineteenth, and one will be on March twenty-fourth, and we will be publicizing these and letting you know the times and the dates of those. With that, I'm going to go on to EC four, which is re-engineer the building inspections, planning, and zoning processes to be more efficient and business planning, or business-friendly. That is also part of the economic development plan. The consultant will be looking at all our processes, and that's one of the things that they want to discuss with the developers of the county. They want the developers' input, they want the business community's input. Are we friendly, or are we not friendly, and what we can do to become more friendly? With that, I'll go on to HS one, structure the new fire EMS emergency management department. We have completed steps one through five, and one through five was getting ready to hire a fire and EMS chief, where we sought the input of the volunteers on the job functions of the fire and EMS chief. At the time, it was called. At the time, it was called Fire and EMS Chief. You're getting ready to change that to Fire and Rescue Chief. We did submit to the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, asking them to conduct a study. And right now, we're on item number six, which is revising the Powhatan code for the changes that are being recommended by the fire and EMS chief.
Pat, can I, just so for the clarity to the public, HS, which stand for health and safety?
Health and safety, yes. So these follow along with, yeah.
Right.
So we're also, you'll see tonight, we're seven and eight. The chief has made recommendations to the current command structure, and you will see that we're making, I'm making the recommendations, number eight, as part of the budget process that you're going to see tonight. Going to page four of 11 on HS2, which is transfer the responsibility of the emergency communications center to the county administrator and relocate the 911 center. We are ongoing on items one and two. Staff has been meeting with the sheriff and discussing actions that might need to be taken. There also have been meeting to find a location for the 911 center. We have no recommendations at this time. If you'll notice that it will be probably next year when you receive recommendations on this. We're trying to identify the department or come up with a recommendation for the department where the 911 function should report to. And we're planning and making those recommendations in December of 2015. HS3, which is to evaluate the needs of our population and determine how best to respond so that they grow, develop, and age healthfully. I was not on this group, but this is one of the ones where I was assigned to be the champion. The champion is the one that is responsible for it. So I think I mentioned this in the workshop. When these came back, it seemed like Mr. Altman and I were primarily the champions on most of these. But I was the champion for item number one, which is to recommend reinstatement of county funding. And you'll see recommendations in my budget for that. And Kathy Pemberton is working on items, item number two, which is working with the Resource Council in Powhatan. The next item is HS4, which is to develop a recreation department. You can see that we're, that is in the future, October 2015. But our new recreation coordinator, Mary Ann Waddell, has already started on this, assessing the needs of the department and looking at whether or not we can have a local university come in and address some, help us come up with a plan to address those needs. On ED1, which stands for Education 1, it has a long list of things that we have completed. And the last item on the list, we did cancel the workshop for the joint school board BOS. And one of the items that we have outstanding is number three. It says, "Schedule quarterly meetings of the BOS chairman, the school board chairman, the county administrator, and the school administrator." And we did hold the first one in December of 2014 with Mr. Tucker and Mr. Cole. And then with the election of the new chairmans, Mr. Melton and Mr. Conca, and the superintendent, and I met in January 2015. And we will, we will continue those quarterly meetings. As you can see, that they're scheduled as item number three on page six of 11. On ED2, which is determine the board's role in workforce development, that is to be determined once we get the economic development plan. Starting on seven of 11, FA1, FA stands for Finance and Fiscal, Fiscal Accountability. Thank you very much. It does say, number one is to develop and implement a performance-based budgeting approach that aligns the budget with the priorities, goals, and objectives of the Board of Supervisors. Any of you that saw Mr. Tucker present his Vision 2030, you will see on his chart the direct link between the board's vision and the budget. And I hope you'll see some of that direct link when I present the budget this evening. So even though we won't have true performance-based budgeting, we won't even start on this till July of 2017. This is a very long process. It took us three years to implement performance-based budgeting in the city of Manassas. We have taken a very small step forward this evening. FA2, which is to continue to examine, evaluate, and improve systems and processes to enhance and aid in the effectiveness of government service, delivery, transparency, and accountability. Thank you to the gentlemen who did recommend that we have taken some small steps for transparency. We hope that we've taken some small steps in accountability with the budget document that was predetermined to you last year. I believe it was Mr. Hodge said that that was the most organized budget that he had received yet as a supervisor. We're presenting it to you in the same format that we did last year. But on this item, priority FA2, this was written by Mr. Timberlake, the Commissioner of Revenue, Ms. Barton, our Treasurer, and Ms. Martin, the Library Director, who came up with this. And I think it was a very unique concept that they came up with, and I think it's going to be very rewarding for the staff because of staff, when staff comes through and recommends an item that they believe will improve effectiveness, we're going to create what we call a business process reengineering initiative. It's in the future, but I think it's an exciting prospect. FA3 is to review and update the county's financial policies, including school funding and capital projects. You will see that we will be coming forward to you in the budget that you see tonight. Recommendations on funding capital projects. And also, I want you to know this item is ongoing. Sharla Schubert has already started. She has the list of policies that need to be complete, and she is getting best practices from local jurisdictions and is working on drafting those policies. FA4, which is to create an annualized prioritized capital improvement plan and other capital maintenance program with consistent viable funding sources. This will be complete. We will present it to you two weeks from this evening. We will present this CIP to you. Priority IN1, IN stands for Infrastructure Develop and Adopt a Utilities Master Plan. This is complete except for item number six, which says to implement as growth occurs. And I want to reemphasize this. Nothing happens with the water, wastewater master plant unless there's growth there to implement it. And priority IN2, finalize the agreement with Cobb's Creek Regional Reservoir. This has been in the newspaper, and you know that the goal from reading the newspaper is to finalize those negotiations with Henrico County sometime in May to bring it back to both the Henrico Board and the Powhatan Board for consideration in June. Priority IN3 is the one priority that is completely 100% done, and that was to secure funding for the water tower for county, Powhatan County, Gooseland County, and the Department of Corrections. That funding is in the 2015 state budget. Priority IN4, develop a communications infrastructure master plan for the Public Safety Communication System. The board did approve the funding. Staff has developed an RFP, and as soon as I review the RFP, we will issue that RFP, which is scheduled to go out in March. IN5, develop a transportation master plan. Mr. Altman did conduct a workshop with the board on the Route 63rd Lane Policy that was done in 2014. And Mr. Altman is working with the RR-PDC on the master plan. That's an ongoing project. IN6, develop an IT phone master plan. This has been assigned to the IT Director. We're hoping to have that complete in October 2014, but that is dependent on the hiring date of the IT Director. IN7, develop a broadband master plan. We will be requesting the board to approve funding for this plan as part of the carryover process. That's why you see that it's coming forward to you in March of 2015. Priority RC1, evaluate and ensure that the county has active participation in each organization in which the Board of Director determines we must play a valuable role. This is another one that was written by Mr. Timberlake, Ms. Barton, and Ms. Martin. And I also think that they came up with a very innovative way to address this priority of the board. This is one that doesn't start until November of 2015. Priority RC2 and RC3, which are to continue develop board and staff relationship with regional partners, is ongoing. And also, continue to build strong relationship with our legislative is also ongoing. So with that, I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have on the status report of the implementation of the three-year priorities in your strategic action plan.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, I'm, Callie just wanted me to point out, she just pointed, we do already have the action plan out there and the status report. And you need to go to the Board of County Supervisors, click on Board of County Supervisors, and it will then direct you to click on the site, the page that you'll go to to get the vision, the strategic action plan. And after this evening, Callie will put up there the March 2nd status report. And we will be coming forward, as requested, to update you monthly on the status of the action plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Ms. Wyler, this is extraordinary. It's a roadmap. It does exactly what it is that this board asks of you and your staff after our July 2014 retreat, where we hammered out our vision and our strategic objectives. We recognize that you can't do it all. Putting it all down on a plan like this helps us understand what's going on, what's been accomplished, what's in process, what the priorities are. It's exactly what I expected. Thank you very much, and thank your staff from me, for us.
Mentioning my staff, I just wanted to point out that when you go to the strategic action plan, on page two is an acknowledgement of all the participants. And I want to thank all of those, including our constitutional officers, Fay Barton, Greg Neal, and Jamie Timberlake, who did participate in the process also.
And thank them too for us.
And Pat, I also want to say thank you for getting it on, I think it was one of the requests we made at the workshop, was getting it on the county website so people could see what things were being worked on. And if they wanted to participate in any shape, form, or fashion, that would give them the opportunity. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I guess we're going to go to item 13, FY16, Proposed Budget Presentation.
On the dais in front of you is a notebook which contains the proposed budget. It's a three-ring binder. It looks pretty empty, but I assure you by the end of all the budget work sessions, it usually does fill up. The PowerPoint presentation is found immediately before tab one. It happens to be behind the table of contents and behind a schedule of the tabs. But immediately before tab one is where you'll find a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. Before I begin, I also would like to thank the leadership team and my staff on the leadership team for the FY2016 proposed budget. It starts with all the departments making recommended budgets to myself. And in particular, most department directors are accustomed to making recommendations. But there were two gentlemen that had to step up to the plate because the department director was no longer with the county, and that is Johnny Melis and Mark Piper, who took the place of Chris Rapp. So those two gentlemen worked extensively on the budgets for the first time, not as department directors. So I wanted to point those out. I also want to point and recognize the team that put the document together that you see. We had a snow day. We were closed on Thursday, so they were in quite a rush on Friday to get it all done. They worked through lunch, and that would be Bridget Lanzalati, Melissa Gradwell, Sharla Schubert, and Linda Jones, who worked all day to put these budget documents together. Also, Sharla Schubert and Mark Altman were on the budget team with me that reviewed all of the budget submittals, met with all the departments. They were instrumental in helping me make the decisions that you see in tonight's budget. So with that, we'll get started on the PowerPoint. The Board of Supervisors provide budget guidelines. The board did not officially adopt these budget guidelines. These are the same budget guidelines that we had from last year. Don't change the real estate tax rate. Maintain the 15% fund balance in the general fund. Balance the budget, which makes sure that revenues equal expenditures. And do not use one-time funding sources to fund operating expenditures. We have met all of the guidelines in the budget. The budget priorities, the budget priorities come directly from your vision, board. You adopted a vision in July, and we have tied the budget to your priorities. Specifically, you will see, as we go through there, FA1, HS1, HS3, ED1, and FA4. The only thing I'm going to mention about FA1 is performance-based budgeting, and this is the one small step. You have come forward with your priorities. We're tying your priorities to what you're going to see in the budget tonight. Also, there are some things you won't see in the budget. We will be coming to you at a later date in what we call the carryover process. So at the year-end, if there are funds in the FY15 budget that are not spent, we can come forward to you and ask that you do something called, "Carry those budgets forward into FY16." And we will be coming forward to you to address three of your priorities, EC1, 2, and 4, which is to implement the economic development plan, implement the EDA reconstitution, and implement business-friendly practices and policies. The budget starts, in our world, with estimating the revenues. The revenue estimates that you see in front of you are for the general fund only. I'd like to again thank Sharla and March, but also Jamie Timberlake, the Commissioner of Revenue, who also helped us with the revenue estimates. The budget that you're going to see tonight does not include the schools. We have not yet received from the schools the school board's adopted budget, so I have no numbers yet for schools. It includes only those funds that are under the, in the general fund, and, excuse me, only those funds that are in the county ledgers. The general fund estimated revenues are $47.5 million. This is up 3.9%, approximately $1.8 million, primarily from the four sources that you see on the slide. Real estate is up slightly. This is entirely due to new construction. We did not have a reassessment this year, so this is entirely new construction. Personal property is up almost $600,000. And from the Commissioner of Revenue, we understand that people are replacing their vehicles, and people are buying more vehicles. You can see the more vehicles because of the motor vehicle license fees that are going up. It's not because we increased the fee, it's because we are licensing more vehicles. And sales tax continues to grow. We have seen a steady increase in sales tax for the past three years now. And all of these are indicators that we are in a healthy, we are in a healthy economic upturn here in Powhatan. It's slow, and it's small, but it is an economic upturn. The revenues for the utility fund, we have a utility fund. Utility funds are proprietary funds, which means that they're normally self-supporting. Our utilities funds has revenues of $2.6 million, but 2.2, almost $2.2 million of their revenues come directly from the general fund. That's not how you operate a utility fund, a proprietary fund. We need to get away from the general fund support of the utility fund. Now, if the, if the general fund doesn't support it, that means that those people that are using the utilities, the rate payers, support the utility. You can't do that in one year. Your utility rates would obviously be unaffordable. But we're going to bring back to you every year changes so that, small steps at a time, the general fund is supporting the utility fund less and less. What we've seen happen is we have budgeted $40,000 for water connections. That's a 144% increase over what we budgeted for FY15. We've budgeted $140,000 for sewer connections. That's a 92% increase over what we budgeted in FY15. What that tells us is people are constructing here in Powhatan. They're constructing, and they're hooking up their water and sewer as they construct. Those are very positive economic indicators. What we have done is, we have increased the water and sewer rates. We've increased them 16%. It is only enough to cover the increase that Chesterfield is charging us for the water, but it is a substantial increase. Because of all of this, the general fund contribution has decreased. Not by a lot, but the general fund contribution has decreased. And we hope to bring that back to you every year to be able to tell you, yes, the general fund is contributing less and less to the utility fund. This is something the board needs to keep in mind if we do any new water or sewer systems. You design those systems so that the rates pay for the systems, not the taxpayers. The revenue estimates for state and federal support are only up about 1.8%. We, we have budgeted $8.1 million. It's an increase of $146,000. The primary areas are shown there. The one that's called Reduction to Aid to Localities, we in the local governments like to say that this is our aid to the Commonwealth. It's where the Commonwealth in the past has, they give us local aid, and then they come back and they say, "Well, we're going to reduce your local aid, but we're not going to tell you where to reduce it from. You, the locality, tell us what you want to reduce." And of course, many of us localities, including Powhatan, will come back and tell you then what line item we would like the aid to reduce. We created our own line item, which is called Reduction in Aid to Localities. So the General Assembly has said that they are not going to reduce our aid, which means that's $52,000 that we will not have to send back to the Commonwealth this year. They did tell us that last year, and then they changed their mind about four months into the budget, so we're hoping they don't change their mind this year. The constitutional officers, we were receiving additional funds for that because the General Assembly did put in a 2% pay raise for constitutional officers. Social Services is receiving a substantial increase. increase, and CSA, we're receiving less funds than what we budgeted in the last year. We're going to now talk about the proposed expenditures, and again, in the general fund, the proposed expenditures are forty-seven point five million dollars. Yes, that does equal the revenues, and that means that our budget is balanced. Our revenues equal, our revenue budget equals our expenditure budget. We are not pulling anything out of our fund balance to fund anything. It's, again, an increase of one point eight million dollars, a three point nine percent. Nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that supports county functions, and eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of that supports the school functions. Primarily, what we have funded is public safety, but we've also put an emphasis on capital. Both capital and public safety are things that you have identified in your priorities. We're gonna go in detail through all of these, so I'm not gonna linger on this slide. The first priority that we have addressed is HS one, which is structure the Fire and Rescue Department. The largest portion of our Fire and Rescue Department is our volunteers. I've been working with Chief Singer to figure out what can we do to help retention of the volunteers. We're still working on that issue. And what can we do to help the volunteers out? So the first thing that we're recommending is that you lower your personal property tax rate for volunteers. Currently, the volunteer on one of their vehicles pay one dollar and eighty cents for personal property tax. We're recommending that you make that point zero 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 one. You have to have some rate, but if you make it a rate of point zero zero one, the bill is so low that it doesn't produce. And so, that's our recommendation. Now, you know, we've talked about this before. We do not control which volunteers qualify for this tax exemption. That is controlled by the volunteer chiefs. You control the tax rate, though, and it's our recommendation that for the work that they do for at least the one vehicle, they shouldn't have to pay any property taxes on it. We also, this was a recommendation, the next item, the twenty thousand dollars in matching grant funds, when I went to one of the chief's meetings, the chief's asked, "Why don't you put something in the budget so that when we get a grant, we apply for grants," we, meaning the volunteers, "apply for grants, and when we receive one of those, the county should put in the money for the, so match is required?" And at that time, I went back to the board, and the board, this happened last October, the board said, "Yes, we will put in that twenty thousand dollars to match the grant," and we're making that recommendation that you do that again this year. We've also added to the budget twenty thousand dollars for training for volunteers. I know it's not enough. It's what we could afford, but we, it's a start. It's twenty thousand dollars in training. We do have other funds that can be used for training, such as the For-For-Life Funds, excuse me, not For-For-Life, the Fire Programs Funds, thank you. We've also added vaccinations and immunizations into the budget, and also, currently, we pay what we call rent to the volunteer companies. It's a stipend that we pay to them to help run their operations, but also because our fire trucks are sitting in there. We're proposing a fifteen percent increase to that rent number. I understand it's been a number of years since that number has been increased.
Pat, do we wait and ask questions at the end?
You may ask questions whenever you like.
So that is the rate that we've been talking about that hadn't been adjusted since two thousand and nine?
Correct. Are you talking about the rent?
The rent?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. One of the other items under HS one was to structure the Fire and Rescue Department, and these are the recommendations that have come in from the chief and that we have funded. A part-time EMS coordinator, this will help out the rescue squad in support. You have two people primarily that must do all the paperwork, or that do all the paperwork, and that's Alan and Lynn Beach. They donate countless, endless hours to the county. This is to help support them in some small way. The fire marshal is a position that we're recommending. It's a part-time position. That position, one of the tasks a position would do is to enforce the State Fire Code for inspections. We're not currently doing those inspections that are required by the Fire Code, and to also enforce the Powhatan Burning Code, which we're also not enforcing. We recommend that you maintain the two Assistant Chiefs at point five FTE, and the Emergency Management Coordinator at point seven five FTE, and that you add two dispatchers for emerg, emergency medical dispatch, for EMD. This is something that was recommended back when Mr. Hodge brought forward this idea of EMD, that we do need additional dispatchers. It's one of the first things that chief said to me, that if you're going to do EMD, you need the additional dispatchers, and he actually showed me why. He walked me through the books. He mailed you an example of that book, but when a call comes into EMD, when a call comes in now, an ambulance is dispatched. It's not, it's not dispatchers BLS or ALS, it's just, an ambulance is dispatched. Now, when a call come, if you implement EMD, a call comes in, you actually, the dispatcher asks questions of the caller to determine if it should, we should be responding with an ALS or a BLS ambulance. That's why we need the additional dispatchers in there. And if you're asking it at the time of the call, you often can get an ALS provider to the victim quicker than if you wait to dispatch, and then, once they get to the scene, they have to call in an ALS provider. There were many things that were requested from various departments. In fact, the requests from the departments totaled over six hundred thousand dollars, not over, just under six hundred thousand dollars. I couldn't fund all of them, and one of the things I couldn't fund were the two sheriff deputies that were requested. The sheriff asked for two dispatchers, and he asked for two sheriff deputies, and I made the decision to go with the two dispatchers. We just don't have the funds to fund all of the six hundred thousand dollars of requests that came in. One of the other things that we're going to address is HS three, which is the needs of the population to age healthfully, and I wrote out that entire task, number one, under this, but it was to recommend reinstatement of county funding for those organizations that support seniors. So you will see an increase of thirty-one thousand five hundred to what we call contributions. The county is allowed by state law to make contributions to nonprofits which prove that they provide a service or a function to the citizens of Powhatan, and they may not be affiliated with any religion, except if you are the YMCA or the Salvation Army. That's what it says in state code. There's two religious organizations which you are allowed to give. It was the group that worked on the health and safety that came up with the list of organizations here in the county that they felt supported the seniors in the county, and that's the ones that we're recommending funding. They also recommend that you, that we fund a part-time family services agent at the Extension Office, and so we do have recommendations in there to fund that part-time position at the Extension Office. We would share that position with Amelia County. The other thing that we've addressed here is FA four, which is the Capital Improvement and Maintenance. We will be bringing forward to you a CIP and a Capital Maintenance Improvement Plan in two weeks. We've also addressed FA three, which is Capital Projects Policies. There's a lot of policies in FA three, but the one we've addressed is Capital Projects, and that is, as your debt service goes down, you should not take your debt service and put it into operations. You need to keep your debt service into some supportive capital. So if you don't have more debt that you're issuing, then put it into your Capital Projects Funds, and that's exactly what we've done. We've increased the Capital Projects, which is contribution, which is your pay-as-you-go capital. It's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in the FY fifteen budget, or the first time we've had that in the budget in a number of years, and we've taken what we've saved in, or not what the reduction in debt service, and we're putting that hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars into the Capital Projects Fund. We're also recommending that we reduce the contingency and fund a school bus lease in the current year. ED two is Workforce Development. We're recommending that you reinstate the funding for the Capital Region Workforce Partnership. We had that discussion tonight. You just took action to reinstate it in FY fifteen, and this nine hundred and twenty-five dollars would be for the same group in FY sixteen, and as we pointed out, it's about two dollars per participant, participant that the county would be paying. Previously, when they did it on a population basis, the county was paying five thousand dollars annually for this group, so we want to thank Mr. Melton for being part of that group that had the funding formula changed from a population basis to a participation basis. You can see it much reduced, and it made it more equitable to Powhatan County. These are the position changes that we're recommending. You've seen all of the, ones on the bottom I've talked about. Simone, I'm gonna talk about the two on the top. The Utility Distribution Technician will be replacing the consultant that we do for MISH Utility, and also doing meter reading for us. All of this is being paid out of a reduction in our consulting contract, so it is not coming out of any taxpayer funds. It didn't increase the general fund contribution to the utility fund, and the Commissioner of Revenue has already reduced his point seven FTE Deputy One to point five, and you'll see that reduction when you see the Commissioner of Revenue's budget. We've already discussed all those other position changes. The positions changes total two hundred and six thousand dollars, and all of those positions are for public safety. They're all listed there. These are the county operating funds that I was talking about. I mentioned the general fund. We also have a Social Services Fund, a CSA Fund, a new operating budget for the Law Library, which is found in the Grants Fund. The Fire and Rescue Fund is where we account for the EMS fees, as well as the two grants that we receive for For-For-Life and Fire Programs. We have a new fund this year. It's the SRP Fund, and a Capital Projects Fund, and a Utilities Fund. The funds total, in the proposed budget, fifty-four million dollars, which is about two point five million dollars, increase from last year. It's a five percent increase. Less the transfers, it's twenty-eight point eight million dollars. Most of the transfers obviously go to the schools. That's why the transfers are twenty-five million dollars, but there's also transfers to other funds, such as CSA, Social Services, Utilities, and Capital Projects. County support of the schools. We support the schools in two ways. You make a cash transfer to the schools, and you also pay the debt service on the schools. The cash transfer to the schools in last year's budget was twenty million, twenty point six million, and two hundred and eighty thousand that you set aside for the SRP Fund, for a total of twenty point nine million dollars was the transfer. We're recommending that that be twenty-one point seven million dollars, an increase of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. The SRP Fund, for which you set aside two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in FY fifteen, we are estimating that you will spend two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of that, and next year, we're estimating that you will need two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. With that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you will fully fund the SRP. That was one of the requests that I heard from the board. We want to just get this done and over within this budget year, don't have to bring it back to a new board, for a new board to have to deal with any budgeting issues dealing with the SRP Fund. So with that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we will fully fund the SRP. Now, the SRP Fund can't close out for three or four more years until all the participants are paid, but you won't have to do any more budget transactions after FY sixteen. In addition, I said to the total transfers that you see up there, we also have debt service. So while the transfer is increasing by eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, our support to the schools for debt service has been reduced by five hundred thousand dollars. There was a five hundred thousand dollar reduction in debt service. So the net increase to the school's support this year is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you look at the transfers a percent of your net total taxes, in both years, it's forty-nine point nine percent. It declined in two thousand and fifteen. The board took, the board took the initiative to reduce the transfer slightly in two thousand and fifteen, and I have followed through in that in two thousand and sixteen. When I say reduce it, I reduce the percentage of, the transfers, the percentage of the net total taxes that we receive. And if you look at the total local support of the schools and compare that as a percentage of net total taxes, you can see, because of the reduction in debt service, we've gone from sixty-three percent down to sixty-two percent. Our fund balance in the general fund, at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, these are audited, audited numbers, was three point nine million dollars. This was twenty point one percent of your next year's operating budget. Your policy is to have that be at fifteen percent. What that meant is that we were, had one point nine million dollars available to transfer to the Capital Maintenance Reserve. CMR stands for Capital Maintenance Reserve. That's another policy that you have, though it's unwritten, that anything in excess of the fifteen percent fund balance, we will use that for one-time capital needs, and you have done that. We have in your book for you a schedule of all of the activities that have happened to the Capital Maintenance Reserve since you established it, all the contributions that you've made to it, and all the expenditures that you've approved from it. What we estimate for June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen is that the fund balance will be at thirteen point four million, which is nineteen point one percent. That means the capital reserve balance at June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen will be two point six million dollars. Currently, it's at two million dollars because you did approve to use approximately one million dollars of it this year. It's currently at two million dollars. We estimate that at June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen, we'll be able to add another six hundred thousand dollars to it, to bring the Capital Maintenance Reserve to two point six million dollars. Projecting out to two thousand, the end of FY sixteen, we project fund balance to be at thirteen point four million dollars. That's because we have a balanced budget. Where our revenues equal our expenditure, so we have the same fund balance. That fund balance will be nineteen point one percent. If it were to be fifteen percent, it would be ten point eight. So that gives you an idea of the two point six million dollars that you have in excess of fifteen percent that you can use on capital maintenance. You will see, and you have already seen, all of the capital maintenance items that we have to address, and I think it was Mr. Hodge that said, "We no longer can kick the can down the road. We need to be addressing our capital needs," and the Capital Maintenance Reserve Fund will help us address those needs. I'd mentioned earlier that we will be coming back to you for an FY sixteen budget amendment, what I called the carryover, and that will be to implement EC one, two, and four. We don't know what the citizens and what the board is gonna recommend in an Economic Development Plan. That's why we don't know yet what we're gonna recommend to you, what we will need in the way of staffing to implement the plan. And the reason I say staffing, we all know right now that Mr. March Altman wears two hats. He's the Planning Director, and he's the Economic Development Director. It could be that the board and the citizens come back and say, "We are very happy with the businesses that we have right now. We do not wish to have any more growth in the county," and if that's the case, we do not have to have an emphasis on economic development. You wouldn't need an Economic Development Director, and maybe the status quo in staffing is just fine. If the board and the citizens come back and say, "We really want to bring in more businesses. We want to be very aggressive in our recruitment of businesses," it may be that we would then have to come back and say, "Mr. Altman can no longer wear two hats." So we don't know what will happen. It's what the citizens and what the board would like to see us happen with the Economic Development Plan. There are going to be four budget workshops. They're on the next four Mondays. They begin at four P.M. They are held here in the Village Building in the conference room. Last year, we had ten, five, I'm sorry, five P.M., stand corrected, five P.M. in the conference room here at the Village Building. Last year, we had approximately eight or ten budget workshops. The board asked me to reduce that, and we did, so I just want to warn you, these budget workshops, I'm sure will go to nine or 10 o'clock at night. We have a lot to cover at each one of the budget workshops. There will be a public hearing on the budget on April twentieth at seven P.M. here in this room, and the board adopts the budget on May fourth. The budget after this evening, sometime tomorrow, please give Cali at least time to get to work tomorrow, to post it on the website, but the budget will be posted on the website. That's our website number, and as we go through the budget process, we normally have handouts at each one, and Cali will make sure that the day after the budget workshop, that we also post those handouts so that any citizen who wants to see what was handed out or discussed at the meeting will be able to see what was handed out or discussed at the budget workshop. So with that, I would like to have you look at your Table of Contents, board. Your Table of Contents is the first page that you see in your binder. What I'd like to point out for you is, in the Table of Contents, we've put the workshop date that we're gonna be addressing these items, so your assignment for next week are only, that you only have to read those items with March ninth as the date. I'm just joking. You don't have an assignment, but I wanted you to know what we will be discussing on March ninth is noted in the agenda, and of course, these agenda is part of the handout that is available to the public, so the public will know what's being discussed at every workshop, so if there's a workshop that interests them, they can come to that one, and they'll know what we're going to be discussing. And I hope that the public will come to the workshop.
Everything on page one is March ninth, except for...
We have a lot to cover on March ninth. That's true, because there's even some more on page two and three for March ninth, but we have a lot to cover. There'll be long workshops, but we hope to go through them. But we hope to go through them quickly and focus only on the major items. So every item is a major item. So I stand ready to answer any questions, if you have any at this time. I know that you've seen it for the very first time tonight and we really didn't expect any questions. But if there's anything I could ask for you.
Like in the past, when we would work on things and we would get updated sheets?
You will be getting updated table of contents as we add to it. The other thing that you will be getting is an updated calendar. The calendar is the first thing behind tab 1. So if the calendar changes, we'll let you know that. We give you updated sheets all through the process. And just like we did last year, we will have a running tab, a running list of all the questions that the board asks. The board asks for additional information. They ask questions. And then we'll be distributing that information to you. And in the end, we'd actually distribute as one whole packet. So any citizens that looking at what are all the questions that the board asks, what were staff's responses, they'll have one PDF document that they can go to to answer for all those questions. We also keep a running list of what we call your open items, anything that you would like staff to consider changing in the budget. Not staff doesn't consider changing the budget. The Board of Supervisors considers changing the budget. But anything that you would like to consider to change in the budget. We keep a running list of that for you also.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. At this time, we'll have our second public comment period. Anybody wishing to come before the board and speak, please do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
I live in 2002 Buckingham Forest Court. I just want to take an opportunity to thank the board and your consent agenda for appropriating the $52,000 for the upgrades in our 10 monitors. It'd be a big benefit to the citizens of Palatane County for the service that we can provide them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beach.
Bring the asset back again.
That's okay, sir.
I got a quick, Bob Wolf again. For the chief.
Please state, I'm sorry.
Bob Wolf again. Bob Wolf, 1858 Hope Meadow. Chief, when a call goes out right now, the chauffeur of the vehicle, the emergency vehicle like fire truck, what's his job?
If we're driving a fire truck?
You're driving a fire truck going to a call.
To drive and also accompany.
No, not the driver. The chauffe, not the chauffeur, I'm sorry, the officer.
The officer? Obviously, he's in charge of the app res and how to respond.
From what I understand, when you'll get a fire call, this is what I've been told, he's sitting there with a book trying to figure out where the nearest hydrant is. There's no dispatcher saying, "Your call is at such and such a street, nearest cross street, nearest hydrant," or anything like that. Am I correct?
They do provide cross streets occasionally, but not routinely.
Not routinely. I had a whole bunch of them. My mind went blank. I'm sorry. I'm at that age.
I understand.
There is a bunch of stuff that doesn't happen in Palatane that should. And I really think you've got to increase that budget. You should have, when a dispatch call comes in, I'll have one for you, chief. And I don't think you guys understand what's going on with a fire. But in a fire.
Mr. Wolf, hold on for one second, please. Let's make sure, if you can filter the questions to the chief.
Okay.
So that he can be prepared to answer them. I think it'd be a little more fair to him.
I understand.
Not that we're not trying to cover anything. And I value, and everybody sitting in this room values the experience that you will bring to us as a fire representative. Let's post the question possibly, give him, and then I'm sure he'll respond back to it and we can make sure that it's on the public record.
Okay, I appreciate that. What I'm trying to say is that, like before you made a motion for the chief, he's got, and you said to him, you like, you have to work with the volunteers. That was part of your motion. He's your chief. Am I correct? He's the guy you hired. You're not going to like everything he does. I'm not going to like everything he does if I go to work for him. All right? Don't tie his, you know, tie his hands. Let him run with the ball. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
And I wish I took notes because I totally blew it here. I apologize for wasting your time here. But please just, you know, let him run with the ball. And he's got more knowledge that you guys really need to, you know, understand about fire and emergency services. It shouldn't be political. I hear you talking about a fire coordinator. Is that something the chief even needs? You know what I'm saying? And that's it. I apologize for rambling.
Mr. Wolf, no need to apologize. And thank you for showing an interest. And I'm sure chief would value any other questions you might have. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? I'll close the public comment period. County administrator comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the, in front of you tonight on the dais is a revised calendar. I would just like to point out the changes. The workshop that was scheduled to be held tomorrow night, March 3rd, has been canceled. I want to point out, this is not a change, but I just wanted to remind you that the PLI dinner at the high school is at 6:00 PM on Wednesday. And also, April 13th is a meeting that we no longer need. And we're recommending that you cancel that meeting. But we want to ask the board if they, if there's anything they else would like, they would like to schedule that meeting for a workshop for any other purpose. You don't have to make that decision tonight. You can just think on that. But if the board has no other purpose, we will cancel the April 13th meeting.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
At this time, we have board comment period. But before we do that, I have something I need to say. At our 224 workshop, we had a resolution presented to us, Resolution 2015-23. After all five supervisors had dialogue, there was a call to question. At that time, I stopped all the conversation and called for a vote. That was a mistake. After reviewing Robert's rules of order after getting home, I realized that I should have continued to allow dialogue to take place on that resolution. Mr. Hodge deserves an apology from me. Mr. Hodge, I apologize. Mr. Norvig and Mr. Williams, who's not here, and Mr. Tucker, if any more dialogue wanted to take place, it should have been allowed. I learned, not perfect. And after reviewing Robert's rule, I realized it was a mistake and make sure that won't happen again. Thank you. At this time, any other board comments? I'll be glad to entertain any.
Mr. Chairman, I have three areas. One, I think there was a gentleman who asked a question about the Comcast office being closed. I'd gotten another call from a citizen I've spoken with previously. This gentleman also called me. I didn't have a chance to call you back yet. I think this weekend was quite busy for me, but I plan to still do that as well as I always do. I think with regards to that, and maybe Mr. Lashmead can correct me if I'm wrong, but my former understanding of that was, is under the former agreement that we did have with Comcast, it was likely where they had planned to close the office, I think anyways, there was a business plan Comcast had already kind of charted out that that office would be eventually phased out or closed from my recollection of that information. And therefore, what the county did was, is we attempted to try to get a better agreement with Comcast than leaving what was in place, if I'm correct. I think that's right. Mr. Lashmead would have just stayed that way. So there is a requirement, I think, in there. I remember reading the agreement at one time. It's been a while. It's fairly detailed. But I think there was a requirement that an office would be within 10 miles of the county if they chose to close that office in that time. There were a lot of other things that we attempted to negotiate with them in good faith as best we could. But of course, obviously, as the citizenry know, we're dealing with obviously a private company that provides those services to the county. There are some constraints, federal and state, I think, Tom, that do constrain them to a certain degree in providing certain things. But I don't think that providing an office in the county is one of those constraints. So I understand, obviously, some citizens may be a little bit alarmed by that and all of a sudden, there was an office in the county and now it's, it may be somewhere else. See, I just want to just kind of respond to that just briefly. I'll respond more individually with you when I get a chance to return your call. And I do want to look back at exactly what we did. But I think in summary, I think that's kind of what we did. That was one comment I wanted to make. Board, other board members may have other comments on that. Second comment I want to make is the area of the joint meetings with the school board. At the last workshop that we did have, both in my motion that I formulated my resolution on, and also Mr. Williams had echoed this as well, and I think even Mr. Norvig had echoed this as well in general speaking. And that is, in that resolution, this is not a do-nothing, do-nothing, no resolution. No, it's actually the opposite. It was that meeting, and I'll address that in a minute. The purpose of that meeting was regarding a personal, personal relationship between each individual, not the matters of doing the board's business which you hired us to do, you elected me to do. You elected me as a taxpaying citizen to get the job done. And that means to deal with the fiscal policy and fiscal constraints this board has, as we've heard this evening, some of that, a little bit of the iceberg. We've also had some comment from the audience this evening, where we've been historically. And that picture isn't where we want to keep going. So the job is obviously to get the job done. And so Mr. Williams, myself, obviously recommended there should be at least a series of joint workshops. And even as we just had this evening in our strategic action plan here, we had one under ED, Economic Development, where a schedule and hold meetings of boss chairman, school board chairman, county administrator, and superintendent discuss future joint meetings of boss and school board. Well, that was back on September 14th, complete. It's always good to have the history because mine's memories are short. Mr. Tucker, or not Mr. Tucker, but Mr. Williams and I proposed specifically forced distinct meetings. And I think we still need to have those. And I recommend those to the chairman and the vice chairman and the county administrator number one. We need to have more than just one meeting with the school board, just on the budget. We've done that in years past, kind of a 50,000-foot flyover. There needs to be one, obviously, on the budget. There needs to be one on the CIP. There needs to be one on their facilities plan. They presented to us, that's correct, their facility study, but that's just a 50,000-foot flyover. And that's not rolling up your sleeves, digging down to the details. And we need one on the fiscal constraints the county faces. So there's four meetings right there that we proposed in the depth of that resolution saying, "No, not going to spend taxpayer money and time dealing with personal injuries that were alleged to have occurred by Mr. Tucker," which are very specific. I'll address those in a moment and how I'm dealing with those, "off your dollar, off your dime, off your hour. Not on your hour, not on your dime." There's a great solution for that. That's an easy one. I'll give you that in a minute. So those four board meetings should be done, at least the budget and the CIP right away as soon as possible with the school board. And understanding the fiscal constraints that the county is under, both boards need to understand that. Even though the school board's job is to fund equality education in the sense of making those dollars go to the classroom and the teachers, their job is education. Our job is how to fund that aspect of it. So those four things right there are get going, hit the ground running, do it now. Now, if it was completed back in September, I understand, we have a leadership team and that's the leadership team. Those four meetings can be proposed anytime. And as Mr. Williams often said, "We may not always agree." I mean, we just heard a motion tonight where there was a tie vote and it got carried over and now certain board members changed their mind and that's fine. And there was a different vote. So, you know, this concept that when you don't agree, well, that means somehow it's bad and it's, you know, it's the end of the world and you need to leave Palatane, that's just not true. Actually, the boards have worked for the first two years as chairman, when I was chairman, professional relationship was very good. We had our meetings, go back, watch the tapes, a challenge. You go back, watch the tapes, play the tapes for the first two years. Very cordial, very professional. And even last year, even though we had a disagreement, a severe disagreement over the SRP and the funding of it, those meetings, from my recollection, were cordial, were professional. Each member got to speak their mind, say where they stood. We didn't all agree, that's true. Boards didn't agree. But that doesn't mean that for some reason, it was the, it was the end of the working relationship by any means to get the county business done. So those four things, and since Mr. Williams couldn't be here tonight and speak with him previously, and he echoes those four things again, we specifically proposed those four things. I know Mr. Tucker had said that we proposed nothing, when that's not true. We proposed something right in the motion. The reason for the motion was to propose something more concrete, substantive, get the job done. Don't mistake motion for progress. We want to make progress, not just make motion. The last thing area I want to comment on is those, is those specific comments. And Mr. Tucker's comments were replete and very specific without proof at that time, obviously. But what I've done is very straightforward. I have called my opposite number on the school board, every single one of them. And I've already set up one meeting, already had one telephone conference with one board member. And I'm setting up a series of others with each one of them, not regarding school policy or fiscal policy or what the boards do that you hired us to do. Because that meeting wasn't about that. If you read the contract and you look through the agreement, it wasn't about that at all. Mr. Tucker's accusations were and allegations were that there were some specific injuries of what we said to other board members or what we said to the body as a whole. I've already spoken with one board member and she talked with me for that link for about an hour and a half in a conference call and we couldn't get together to meet, but that's all right. And she doesn't recall any of that. So I'm going to go through that list and I'll meet one-on-one. And the preferred method, I know Mr. Melton wondered in the resolution where it said it wasn't the preferred method to meet with the school board on those terms. That's right. Here's the preferred method, one-on-one, face-to-face, me and that other board member. If they believe I've some way said something that wasn't professional or I said something that was inaccurate, or I said something that offended them in some way. For me in this county, I've learned living here at least 15 years, and I did it before I came to this county anyways, because my faith taught me that, Matthew 18. If my brother somehow offends me, I go to them personally, face-to-face. That's the best way to resolve a dispute. I don't need a mediator to resolve a dispute with my neighbor in Palatane. I go next to my neighbor and introduce myself or I walk down the street to these gentlemen who are neighbors. Knock on the door if I have a problem or if they have a problem with me, they know where I live, come knock on that door. I don't need a mediator or arbitrator to do that. I don't need certainly even a judge or a jury, really. Now, sometimes things get that far, unfortunately. But, you know, if it's a personal offense or something that personally offended a board member, I'm going to meet with each one of those. And if there's something there, those two people are adults. I'm an adult, they're an adult. We're both professionals. We're both elected by the people to get the work of the county done and not be distracted with some kind of personal offense. If that's what's going on, as Mr. Tucker said, I got a solution for that and I'm working on that. But so far, I have not had anyone say to me or come to me from that school board saying, "Well, Barry, you said X, Y, and Z to me and that really ticked me off." And if there is, I got an open door, right down the street here, doors open all the time. People come in all the time to my office, even without appointments. Anybody who knows me knows that. I got a phone number, it's right there, sales no secret. These gentlemen have been getting ahold of me about the Comcast deal. I get back to people. So there is a preferred method of doing that without wasting taxpayer dollars, without delaying the real work of the boards. And that's what you hired us to do. So I wanted to address those concerns that were put out there. And one thing that was brought up was the reason and the procedure of how that motion was brought up. Sometimes, as you know, the board does have a set of bylaws and a set of rules. We recently changed those. And you submit something so far in advance to get it on the agenda. We've had other members of the board throughout the last three years, obviously, need to add something to the agenda if they either, something came up or maybe they missed a deadline. We had the meeting scheduled for the snowy night, for that storm that came in that Chief Singer was talking about and Mr. Melton signed on. And that storm, in advance of that storm, I had made a request, but I missed that request by one day. I was thinking the old board rules of five days and not the new board rules of seven days. That was just an honest mistake on my part. There wasn't any reason to put it on the agenda so that it wasn't out there publicly. People draw these kind of strange conclusions from those things. And then the bylaws say, once the agenda is set, you don't add it unless there's unanimous consent. So even though that meeting was moved a week, under the bylaws, you still can't amend it or add it. Maybe we ought to look at that under the bylaws for the public's sake of the public. But, so that's the reason it came up in the context. And I think Mr. Adams had raised that question, that at the workshop. Didn't have a chance to respond to that because it was so late at night. And the courtesy of that, I did not comment at that time. So I think the citizenry needs to know and the record needs to be clear that there's So I think the citizenry needs to know, and the record needs to be clear, that there's a method that each individual board member can do. If they believe their opposite number has somehow offended them, sends something that's a personal attack, or whatever it may be, that's a job for that individual board member to go to that person one-on-one first and see if they can work and resolve that out. I had not heard that litany of specific allegations like that before in that context, and so in that coming to light, that's my job to pick that up and run with it, and I'm already in the process of doing that. But bottom line is, it's not as Mr. Tucker set forth, that we don't propose anything, and that there's not a professional working relationship. We're going to get the job done this year. Have those meetings, as I've recommended, Mr. Williams and I think Mr. Norvig's in agreement, I think the other board members would be too, is get ground-baking meetings and get them done, no matter when they are. I don't care, I'll bend my schedule to it. You hired me to do the job, do the job. You buy the ticket, take the ride. So I wanted to address those concerns, because I think it's important, as Paul Harvey says, to hear the rest of the story. And I wasn't able to do that, and I respect Mr. Chairman Melton's apology this evening. I was going to respond that evening and try to get that all in one context, but that didn't happen that night. So it gets spilled over to this. So I think it's important for the public to know that, that that is the reason I made the motion, and that is the reason, even though it was a 3-2 vote, that's why that meeting was canceled, but that does not mean we're not talking, not listening, not having meetings. I've had a good relationship for the last three years with the opposite number, Valerie, on my school board, third district. When we've met and the school board meetings and talked, we've had a good working relationship. So I don't see any evidence of what Mr. Tucker put forth, but I'm going to flush that out with my individual opposite numbers on that school board and work through it if need be individually, not on your time and not on your dime. And so that's how I'm going to handle that, and that is the preferred method. So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Can I, Mr. Norvig?
I do, sir. I just want to say thank you for your comments. That shows great leadership, and I'm encouraged for, since I'm the new guy, it encourages me to look forward to working with you all, and that's how we should be doing business right there. So I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Thank you.
I have several comments. Start, first of all, do one on a positive note. I'd like to thank VDOT staff for the tremendous job they've done over the last couple of weeks. I travel a lot, as some of you know, and I constantly find our roads to be in much better shape than some of those in the surrounding jurisdictions. Also, I'd like to thank Southside Electric staff and the Virginia Power staff. This county had very few long power outages, we had some, and I'd like to thank those people who went out in the challenging environment to make sure that they got electricity back onto people. Some of us have been giving phone calls to the board of supervisors on the park and recs fields not being ready to go yet, and I know they're working hard, as I spoke to their park and recs director, on getting those fields ready for this week, but I understand the weather's coming in, so very possibly they may not take place. Have been getting some phone calls, and I'll let the other board members know, I think some of us have seen the emails from the travel association ball teams that are upset that they're being charged to use the fields. And I know I've spoken with Pat briefly about it, and we're trying to be as fair as possible with that. Also have been contacted by citizens about the lacrosse program and their need for fields, and I know the county park and recs people in March are working hard to try to address those. Possibly, maybe there will be a solution. I know we have some facilities that were proffered to us in rezoning, maybe that could be used if it could be funded and if we could find the funds to do those things. I have spent right much time with several people on the rescue squad situation, and I appreciate Mr. Wolf's comments tonight and the willingness to serve in our county. I learned a tremendous amount. I probably spent seven, eight hours with Alan, Billy, and Kenny Holy. I value that. Appropriating the funds to address the, upgrade the machines is much needed, and hopefully it will help save lives in the long run. I want everyone to remember, I think that I said this to Alan once, and I said it to someone else today, that we were all working for the same thing, that was meeting the needs of the citizens of the county. Somehow, in all of this back-and-forth information, I think it, it was some, lack of a better word, maybe some ill will that was, that went on. I think that hopefully we can work through that. I think Chief Singer's working very hard, and I agree with Mr. Wolf. There will be some things that he will implement that probably will not be favorable to some of the volunteers, but I think we need to keep in mind that the purpose of that is to meet the citizens' needs in a more professional manner, because they expect it. That's all I've got at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I want to reiterate what I shared at the workshop about the, a book published recently on St. Catherine. St. Catherine is the person who fundamentally built Bellmead, St. Francis, and St. Emma's in the western part of our county. Book's very helpful in explaining how a saint becomes a saint, not only because of the building of these buildings, but her personality and her belief and her faith. I commend the book. I'm going through quarters through it, it's taught me a great deal about good works. Lastly, I'd like to thank you, Tom, for persevering on the Shiloh project. I know of working with the Commonwealth, Department of Corrections, General Services, et cetera, was a pain. I appreciate you sticking to it, seeing it through. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Couple of quick things. I have met with the school, my counterpart on the school board, Mr. Kunkka. Mr. Kunkka and I have decided that we will begin the process that we began as a board when Mr. Hodge was chairman, that we had quarterly meetings scheduled with the school board. We will have that at a minimum. We've actually, we'll be sitting with Pat and Mr. Jones about scheduling some meetings. All four topics that Mr. Hodge brought up will be addressed on our March 23rd workshop. It's a budget workshop, school board, CIP, other capital and debt services, so a lot of that will be addressed on the 23rd. We also want to applaud you, Mr. Hodge, if you've reached out to your fellow school board representatives, and I true, always have said the same thing, reach out and talk to people, and I think you'll find that maybe you're not as far apart, or that you can hear any differences out or misinformation that maybe somebody does have. So I applaud you for that effort.
Thank you.
I will say this, if my recommendation is not to correct anything, but I think we always have always been seven days on a requesting. Mr. Moore did propose, we make a change, I don't think that change was adopted by the board, and that was to move it to five days. So, you know, doesn't matter, we did allow it to go on the agenda, five votes to zero. I want everyone to realize that, that we did vote five votes to zero to make sure that the item was added to the agenda and it could be voted upon by the current board. Thank you. At this, at this time, we'll go into a closed meeting. Can I get someone to lead us into the closed, read the language and lead us into the closed meeting?
I can do that, Mr. Chairman. I move to be going to closed meeting pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Freedom Innovation Act with the purposes of, one, discussing concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of a business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A5. And consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, a consultation with a legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7. I believe that's good enough. That's a motion.
Any a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. We're going to certify that we discussed, Pat will do that for us.
Yeah, Pat can do that for us and call a roll.
Grabbing my...
There he is here, okay, good.